And of course.
Our specific exit plan is since we're going to be at different points in the meeting.
Right, yeah, so we'll have to.
Should we run up with Eric?
Yeah.
How we should signal that if we.
We'll figure out a time and I'm going to talk to people who need him in the middle. During 5:00.
I should probably go to him because there's media setting up down there.
Oh, great.
Probably be different.
Well, she'll.
Very good job.
We're going down.
Let's check space with him. Eric will see what he wants to. Eric.
Yeah. Information from our perspective.
Do not compromise.
My understanding. We're going to skip the proceedings.
Oh, good.
If anything exciting comes out, please let us know.
Uh, X work. You did a great job this morning. You really did. I mean, now the process, I thought.
It was very clear. Yeah, you did a great job.
Oh, you did a great job. Yeah, that's all I was trying to say. Yep, exactly.
Yes.
Okay, so just checking in, so I'm going to roll down with you at 3:45.
So it's that small car and I already got 4:00.
Oh, you already do.
So that's, hey Eric. Perhaps, I mean.
Because we're going to, we're going to leave at 4:30.
So, but we could have Ashley come later and we could go inside.
What point means meteoric there.
Right, no, I'm just thinking through the process, so.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Ashley, Ashley would go with us around 4:30.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll be with you at 3:30.
Yep.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yep. Bob, we need to split Ashley and you don't have.
Oh, yeah.
I like your entire shoes. Too soon for that.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Yes.
We were on, we asked them how we looked a team minutes earlier today.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Eric Ebersberger. I work with the DNR in Madison and I want to thank you for coming this afternoon. Thank you for being here and thank you for participating in a public hearing. Just a couple of notes. We'd like you to fill out an appearance slip. If you're here, you have to fill out an appearance slip if you want to make a statement this afternoon. I also encourage you to take a index card if you have a question for the DNR personnel here. If you write that out, we're only going to take written questions. If you write out your question on this card and you can hand it to any of the DNR personnel who are here. We also have a sheet for you to submit a written comment. We're accepting written comments through August 28th, so you don't have to submit written comments here tonight, but if you'd like to, you may. Written comments have the same force and effect as oral comments made at today's hearing. Shaylee Pfeiffer is going to start the presentation portion of this afternoon's activities in about three minutes or so. So I just encourage you to write out your questions if you have them and fill out an appearance slip. Thank you.
Good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and get started. We want to make sure that we have plenty of time for the public hearing portion of this meeting so that we have opportunities to hear everybody's comments that they have. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with the preliminary presentation. I first just want to thank everybody for taking the time to come out to this meeting. It's always a pleasure to have a full room to talk to and to see so many people who care about these issues and have taken your time from, I'm sure, a busy schedule. So I appreciate you all being here today. My name is Shaylee Pfeiffer. I work for the DNR in the Madison office. Got to make sure I know how this presentation gets forwarded along. We had one public hearing last night that was held in Waukesha, Wisconsin. This evening, we have another public hearing that's scheduled to be in Racine, in the city of Racine this evening, and that starts at 5:30. So I'm going to let you guys know right now, when you're giving the comments, I'll be up here listening to those until 3:30. But then myself and a couple other of the staff are going to need to leave to make sure that we're down to get the Racine meeting. But I will be able to listen to the rest of the comments that will be audiotaped and I'll be able to listen to any that are still remaining after I leave. So just wanted to let people know right up front how that schedule will work. To give you a background, this first part of the meeting is informational. I have a 20-minute presentation that just goes through some of the basics of the application and the Department of Natural Resources review. We will then have a period of time for question and answer. So you all should have an index card. If at any point during the presentation you have a question, please write your question down on that index card and hand it to DNR staff. Bob's over there, Nikki's over here. We've got wooden name tags on. That means that as soon as I'm done, we can start answering questions. We just want to run this meeting as smoothly and as efficiently as possible so we have a lot of time for public comments. So if you need a card right now, you didn't get one, you can raise your hand and someone will bring one to you right away. We're going to start the public hearing no later than 2:00 PM. If we're done with questions before 2:00 PM, we'll start the public hearing right away. But we will, at a minimum, start the public hearing portion of this at 2:00 PM at a minimum. So. What am I going to cover in this presentation? I've got a little bit of introductory material that just talks a little bit about the compact and some context for the Waukesha diversion application. I've got some information that just gives you an overview of their application. I'll then get into the key technical criteria that the DNR used and some of the decisions that we made along the way in that draft technical review. I'll provide an overview of the environmental review process. So this is going to be a brief presentation. The technical review's 140 pages long. The EIS is 250 pages long. So there's no way that I can cover everything that's in all of those. But if you do have a question about something, you know, please write it down and we can get to a little bit more of the information that's specifically of interest to the people in this room. And then I just want to make a quick distinction between the technical review and the EIS. So the technical review is the document that's required by the Great Lakes Compact and that's what the State of Wisconsin's charged with putting together. So we have a draft technical review that we released in the end of June of this year. The EIS, the Environmental Impact Statement, is a document that the State of Wisconsin puts together to help inform that decision. So this gives you an overview of kind of DNR milestones and some sense of the timeline in this process. We first did a public notice of the application from the city of Waukesha in July of 2011. We held hearings at that point that gave an overview of what the application process is and gave people an opportunity to comment on the application, questions they had about the application, places that they thought needed clarification, any other comments they were interested in. Over the last four years, we've been considering those comments. We've been drafting an EIS, drafting the technical review. We've done independent analysis from the DNR. We've asked for additional information from the city of Waukesha and their consultants to come up with these draft documents at this point. So where we are now is in the second set of public hearings and what's available for comment at this point is the draft EIS and the draft technical review. As I mentioned, those were released in June of this year and we have a two-month comment period that will end August 28th. What will happen next is we will consider those comments in drafting final documents. So there will be final revisions to the EIS and the technical review and those final documents will determine, will be sort of the department's determination if the application's approvable and can be forwarded to the regional body and compact council. So moving into just a background on the compact, the Great Lakes Compact has a ban on diversions with some limited exceptions. And so in general, it bans diversions, but there are limited exceptions and one of those exceptions is for a community in a straddling county. Waukesha County qualifies as a straddling community because the Great Lakes Basin boundary runs through part of that county. So the city of Waukesha is wholly inside Waukesha County. They're a community within a straddling county and they're requesting water for public supply purposes. So what this means is that while they're eligible to apply to get a Great Lakes diversion, any community outside of straddling county would not. If you had a community in Jefferson County, they would not be eligible to apply for a Great Lakes diversion. So just to clarify that there's a ban on diversions with some limited exceptions and Waukesha, the city of Waukesha falls into that exception. The DNR decision, what is it that the DNR is required to do with this application? Our responsibility is to determine if the application meets the Great Lakes Compact diversion criteria. The compact includes some extensive criteria. There are four criteria related to water supply, two related to water conservation, five criteria related to the wastewater return criteria, and then two criteria talking about what the potential environmental impacts to the Great Lakes Basin would be, and two additional criteria. So our job was to go through each of those criteria systematically. Now I can get into a little bit of background just on the specifics of the application. So the city of Waukesha is requesting an annual average of 10.1 million gallons per day with a peak day of 16.7 million gallons per day. The source of the water for the diversion would be the Lake Michigan via the Oak Creek Water Utility and it would be returned to Lake Michigan via the Root River near 60th and Oakwood in the city of Franklin. This volume being requested is slightly less. The city of Waukesha submitted an updated application in 2013. These volumes are slightly less than the original application and in addition, the preferred return flow volume location changed from Underwood Creek to the Root River. So this next slide gives you an overview of what's being proposed, what those pipeline routes would look like. If you take, oops. If you take a look at this blue line here, I'm going the wrong way with it. This is the water supply route. So the water would come from Oak Creek, a connection to the Oak Creek system, and go up to Waukesha and then the wastewater return would be taken from the wastewater treatment plant, treated wastewater from the city of Waukesha would be returned to the Root River. You can note that they share a pipeline route for most of the proposed project. In addition, several other return flow locations were considered and reviewed by the DNR and those include a route that would have a discharge directly to the lake, so not via tributary, but directly to the lake. And in addition, an alternative that would return the wastewater to the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewage District. So water supply sources. One of the requirements in the Great Lakes Compact criteria is that an applicant, so in this case, the city of Waukesha, needs to look at water supply alternatives and determine that they don't have a reasonable water supply alternative. So in this application, six different alternatives were evaluated. Certainly, the Lake Michigan alternative was evaluated and then five other alternatives with some different sources. The first alternative that was evaluated was one that combines using the deep aquifer and the shallow aquifer. This is the sort of proposed area of the shallow aquifer well field. An alternative that would just use the shallow aquifer and includes wells that are right along the Fox River that would induce water from the Fox River into those wells. An alternative that would combine using some of Lake Michigan water as well as being supplemented by the shallow aquifer. And then another alternative that would put a well field out here in western Waukesha County where the deep aquifer is unconfined and pipe that water through a pipeline to the city. And then finally, the sixth alternative that is considered is one that's called the multiple sources alternative. So that's an alternative that includes the deep aquifer, the shallow aquifer, some water from this well field out here, some water from a couple of quarries in the area, and some water from some wells east of the city that are in, that would be in the Solerian dolomite. I'll just make a note here for some of you who have been tracking this more carefully. In the EIS, there's also a discussion of water supply alternatives and that's focused separately on pipeline routes and the different potential impacts from different pipeline So I'm going to move into talking about the criteria more specifically and our review of those criteria. The first criteria we're looking at here is that they have to, the city has to demonstrate that they're without adequate supplies of potable water. So for illustration purposes, we looked at their water use in 2014. At that point in time, they had an average day demand of 6.6 million gallons a day. Of that water, 5.1 million gallons a day was treated for radium or blended before it entered the water system. The remaining 1.5 was not treated for radium and before it entered the system and therefore that system does not meet state drinking water standards that requires everything be blended or treated before it's entering the system. So that was the basis for our determination that the city is currently without adequate supplies of potable water with the existing water supply system that they have. Next, I'm going to move to, there's a criteria that we reviewed that requires the city to meet the state water supply service area planning requirement. And in this, the statute requires that the area is consistent with the current sewer service area. They're required under state law to plan for the full potential service area and this was the area that was used to determine the future water demand. So this map here just illustrates what that proposed service area looks like. The next thing we looked at is we needed to determine based on the criteria whether the demand that was being requested was reasonable. The way we did this is we looked at three different estimates that were developed looking at water demand. These estimates ranged from a projected of 8.5 up to 12.1. They were conducted by the Southeast Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission, the city of Waukesha and their application, and the Department of Natural Resources did an independent evaluation of those as well. The department's conclusions was that we had three different ways of estimating this demand. They were done using different methodologies. However, they came down to similar conclusions and through that we determined that the demand estimate was reasonable that the city of Waukesha proposed. Note that all of these demand estimates include water conservation, projected water conservation savings that would be estimated to be 1.0 million gallons a day at full buildout of the service area in 2000, approximately 2050. So then our next step was to look at the criteria that requires to determine if they have a reasonable water supply alternative in the Mississippi River Basin. Based on the demand estimates that we did with that range, we decided to use the low end of the range, so the 8.5 million gallons a day. And the thinking there was that if they didn't have a reasonable water supply alternative at a lower demand, then they wouldn't have a reasonable water supply alternative at the 10.1 that they were requesting. So that's the approach that we took with that. We looked at the costs of the different alternatives, the impacts to public health and the environmental impacts. From the review, we did not make a determination based on cost or public health. We found that all of the alternatives as proposed could meet the federal state drinking water standards, that all of the costs were within a range of being similar to each other. Our determination that they had no reasonable water supply alternative was based on the potential for environmental impacts. This table's pretty busy, but if you take a look at it, this identifies the alternative and this identifies the resource of concern. Most of these alternatives include the shallow aquifer south of the city. For all of those alternatives, the resource of concern was wetlands. And for the alternative with the fewest impacts to wetlands, we projected that over 700 acres of wetlands could be significantly impacted from that alternative. And then the last alternative here, the unconfined deep aquifer in western Waukesha County, there the determination was based on potential impacts to lakes in that area with drawdowns of six to 12 inches that were modeled and greater than 10% decrease in base flow. And so that was the determination that there could be significant adverse impacts from that alternative as well. That's a really quick explanation of how we got through determining that there was no reasonable water supply alternative in the Mississippi River Basin. So moving on, there's two criteria that relate to water conservation. The first is that the proposed diversion cannot be reasonably avoided through conservation measures. We determined from this that part of the diversion can be avoided through the projected 1.0 million gallons a day of savings through implementation of conservation measures, but that the entire demand could not be avoided. The second provision is that they need to demonstrate that they will implement water conservation measures that are environmentally sound and economically feasible. And we determined that the applicant did meet the requirements of NR 852. NR 852 is the State of Wisconsin's Water Conservation Administrative Rule and it identifies a number of different factors that needs to be in the city, in an applicant's water conservation plan. And so our review of their plan against that rule identified that they met all the requirements that they needed to for that rule. I'm going to move on to wastewater. So there are five different criteria related to wastewater. And as I mentioned before, they changed their preferred discharge location from Underwood Creek to the Root River. The Root River Pipeline shares the water supply pipeline from Oak Creek, which provides for cost savings and decreases the environmental impacts. On the average day, the city of Waukesha's wastewater discharge is greater than their withdrawals due to leaky pipes and inflow of water into those pipes. And this is a situation that's similar for municipalities all across Wisconsin and all across the United States. So the DNR worked with the city to come up with a return flow management scheme that would maximize the amount of Lake Michigan water that was returned to the basin and minimize Mississippi River Basin back to the Root River. This scheme also sets it up so that it provides for more flow to the Fox River with the intent of trying to protect the integrity of both of those basins. The city will need to obtain permits prior to receiving any sort of formal and final diversion approval from the DNR. They'll be required to meet all of the requirements under those statutes, including water quality based effluent limits for pollutants of concern such as phosphorus, temperature, and So environmental impacts related criteria, just really quickly, looking at water quantity impacts, this middle column here shows what the maximum annual withdrawal from the Great Lakes that the city of Waukesha would have. And as you can see, it's a tiny fraction of the total volume of Lake Michigan and an even smaller fraction of the total volume of all the Great Lakes. From the water quality perspective, based on our review in the EIS, we expect that there would be minimal to no impacts to the Lake Michigan basin. So to switch gears a little bit, I'm going to talk about the environmental impact statement. First of all, what is an environmental impact statement? It was not required for this. It was not required for this project, but the department decided to complete one as part of the analysis because there was such overwhelming interest in this project and concern. So what is an EIS? It's a relevant environmental information to inform a DNR decision. So it's not a decision-making document, but it's a document that identifies what the potential environmental impacts would be or environmental benefits that it's intended to inform the decision. In this situation, the technical review is actually the document, that's the decision-making document, that lays out how the department makes their decision. So here's just an outline for what's in the EIS. There's an introduction and summary to the project. There's an identification of the project alternatives that includes both water supply and return flow pipelines. Section three is called the affected environment, and that talks about what environmental resources are in the project area. Section four is the environmental effects, and that section includes what the projected impacts and benefits to these areas and the resources would be. And then finally, section five is a brief comparison of the different alternatives that were considered. So we'll move on to process, what happens next. On this slide, we're still towards the beginning of this process. We're still in the back through Wisconsin determines if the application is approvable. So if we, if the State of Wisconsin determines it's approvable, it will be forwarded to the Great Lakes states and provinces. At that point, the Great Lakes states will need to make a decision as to whether they find the application approvable, approvable with conditions, or whether they want to deny the application. If they approve the application, it would return to Wisconsin for final permits and any final decisions, including kind of the specifics of what would be in a diversion approval, so any specific languages. At either of these points, if it's determined that the application's either not approvable at the state level or among the Great Lakes states, then the application ends at that point. I will note, though, that for any of these situations, both if it's approved or not approved, there's opportunities for legal remedy, both at the state and the federal level. So, public comments. As I mentioned previously, we're going to accept comments until August 28th, and we can take comments on the draft environmental impact statement and on the draft technical review. We will respond to the EIS, to comments on the EIS as part of the final EIS, and we'll carefully weigh any comments that we receive on the technical review in making our final decision and putting together a final document on the technical review. We have copies of the technical review, the draft technical review and EIS document on CDs. If you'd like to get one of those, you can talk to somebody at the information desk out here. In addition, those documents are available on our website, along with quite a bit of additional correspondence, additional information that was provided by the city along the way. So if you want to provide comments, you can do that here this afternoon orally. You can provide written comments that you submit at this hearing, or you can provide written comments that you mail to the DNR or that you email to the DNR. And with that, we're going to go ahead and we can answer any questions that there are. So if you, I don't know if has anybody turned in any questions at this point yet? What? Bob's got a few. Erychasm? Does he want to start? So we're going to answer some questions right now. If you have a question, I'd encourage you to write that question down on your card and turn it in, and we'll try and be thoughtful already. Eric, did you have some questions that you can answer right now?
Does anybody need a card?
If there is a conflict between the language of the compact and the language of the Wisconsin implementing statute, which would you use in making your decision? If there is in fact a conflict between the compact and the state implementing law, the compact has the effect of federal law, so that would be supreme to the state law, I'm assuming. Have any of the eight Great Lakes states and Canada given input into the proposed diversion? No, they have not. If the department finds the diversion application approvable, we'll be forwarding it to the regional body, and the regional body is comprised of the eight Great Lakes states and the Canadian provinces of Quebec and Ontario, and at that point, they'll be weighing in on it. Third question is, why is the DNR entertaining violating the terms of the Great Lakes Compact? We are not entertaining violating the terms of the compact.
Okay, I got questions here. So this first question is, does DNR share or not the coalition's view that the regional groundwater model should be run again with the benefit of new information suggesting a sustained rebound in the deep aquifer drawdown? So the Southeast Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission has an extensive document that they put together that's a water supply plan for the seven county areas in southeast Wisconsin. And that was based on information that goes up to 2,000 for water supply. And so, yeah, it would be great if we had an update to that for 2015. I'd agree that that would be certainly helpful to be new information. There's always costs and other issues in terms of making something like that happen, but it's something that we would definitely use and be interested in. So here's the next question. At this point, how much does the DNR know about the extent to which the modeled water table drawdown due to new shallow wells would actually have any negative impact on nearby wetlands or on fish and aquatic life in the nearby streams? So as I mentioned, DNR did some additional review specifically related to the reasonable water supply alternatives. We used a model that was developed by the USGS that was new since the city of Waukesha originally did their groundwater modeling. We took that model, and we reran all of the scenarios at that 8.5 million gallons a day threshold. And from that model, that's where those figures that I had that I showed earlier about the number of acres of wetlands that would be impacted. What that meant was that those are the acres of wetlands that are within the one-foot drawdown contour from the groundwater flow model. And we chose that one-foot drawdown based on the expert opinion of the DNR staff that are wetland specialists for the State of Wisconsin. So there's information from a variety of Army Corps publications that one foot of drawdown is kind of the maximum of a capillary fringe, so that's sort of the area of water that can move above the water table. In most soils, that would actually be less. So the one foot's sort of the maximum area of that. So that's how we did that determination that that's the number of acres that we would expect could have potential significant adverse impacts to those wetlands. Trying to think of what else I might say about that. There's additional information that we looked at with that that divided it out by types of wetlands. So there's kind of two different groupings of wetlands in the Wisconsin classification system that look at wetlands that have, that are permanently, you know, that are usually inundated and wetland soils that are usually just wet. And so when we separated those out for further analysis, I believe that the, that it was around 500 acres of wetlands that were in the most vulnerable category. With that, for the department, it ends up being a huge number of acres of wetlands that could be impacted. All right, this next question is, what impact does our input have on approval? So the way that that works is we take comments and we consider those comments in our review. We had two hours of testimony last night. There was a huge variety of opinions that were expressed and different bases of information, and all of that is really helpful for our review process. So those comments will be taken into consideration, and they'll be funneled into any final documents and any final decisions. This next question is, why 1.5 million gallons a day of water that was not treated in the Waukesha system? So really, that comes down to why the city of Waukesha has this application. They need to figure out a way to meet the state drinking water standards by 2018. At this point, they, I mean, they're opting to pursue a Great Lakes diversion of water rather than incur additional costs to put additional treatment on their supply facilities. Now here's the next question. How does the Waukesha application not meet some of the compact's most important requirements? Well, our determination from the Department of Natural Resources is that they do meet the criteria that are laid out in the compact. That's our draft position at this point. This is identified by Clean Wisconsin, it sort of says Clean by Clean Wisconsin. The Compact Implementation Coalition has forwarded an alternative proposal to the DNR. That proposal was provided to the DNR, you know, in July, so after we released our draft. So that's part of the comments that we've received, and we'll certainly consider those comments along with everybody else's comments as we think about what our final decisions and EIS and technical review should look like. Is the DNR considering the environmental impacts on the Fox River in the diversion scenario as part of its reasonable water supply alternatives analysis? Or is that only an EIS evaluation but not part of the compact analysis? Yeah, this person's got it right on. So the compact criteria doesn't really address what environmental impacts you'd have in any basin other than the Great Lakes Basin. So the technical review really just deals with meeting those criteria in the compact and looking, focusing on environmental impacts in the Great Lakes Basin. However, the EIS is just a full disclosure of environmental impacts, and so therefore needs to talk about the Fox River and what the environmental impacts to the Fox River might be. And so that's what's included. There's analysis in the EIS on impacts to the Fox River. Okay, I think I got some more questions right in the middle. So I'm going to let somebody else answer some, and then I'll come back and find the ones that I missed. Thank you. Does somebody else have questions? Do any of the other staff have answers right away? Or I can, I just got to find, you just gave me somebody. I've got to find them.
So we have a question related to, why isn't the DNR adhering to the NR 852? This is the state's rule for implementing water conservation, the requirement that all required water conservation measures be implemented prior to this middle of the diversion application. Upon review, determination was that all of these requirements were met. These included two tiers of required conservation and efficiency measures for tier one and tier two, and then they were also required to complete a conservation plan and an economic feasibility study to identify other potential measures that could be implemented. All of this was done prior to their submitting the application in 2010. They were revised with different revisions along the way, but the determination was that they met these requirements.
Okay, so this next question is, has the DNR taken into account the rebound of water volume and pressure in the last few years of the deep aquifer? I understand that the DNR has been informed of recent information providing the rebound. So yes, absolutely, the DNR has been informed of that by the USGS. We have excellent USGS offices in the State of Wisconsin. We're very lucky that way. And in the technical review, there's a discussion of that rebound. So we took information from a couple of groundwater flow models that were done, as well as the groundwater monitoring network that's in the State of Wisconsin. There's a new monitoring well that was put in place about two years ago, maybe three years ago, that's actually in the city of Waukesha. And so, yeah, that information is in the technical review, and that information's part of our consideration in the application. This next question is, is there a minimum wetland acreage to be affected that triggers rejection of the alternative, i.e. less than 700 acres? So, no, we did not make a determination of this number of acres of wetlands is acceptable to impact, but beyond that is too much. Essentially, we came from the position of 700 acres is certainly too many acres of wetlands that would be impacted, but did not make that further analysis of exactly what's the minimum that would be acceptable. Well, I didn't talk about wetlands for a long time, but I'm going to try and keep this moving. All right, would Oak Creek profit from the diversion? Oak Creek would, the water would be purchased from the city of Oak Creek, so, I mean, they would have increased sales of water. This next question is, why is the DNR considering the application when it violates the terms of the Great Lakes Compact, which states that it may not include future growth in the application? So there's some editorial in this question, and I'd encourage people to make comments to this effect. But I will just say that the interpretation of the state statutes, the interpretation of the state implementing legislation, when that was passed by Wisconsin, was that it was fully in compliance with the Great Lakes Compact. And so the State of Wisconsin's position is that its statutes are legal and that we should be following them and that they're in compliance with the compact. When heavy rains cause overflow and water is diverted to the Fox, will this flow to the Lake Michigan or to the Mississippi River? Okay, so the way that the, the way that the proposal, the way that the wastewater return flow scheme works is that it'll take the annual average of the previous year's withdrawal from Lake Michigan, and the city of Waukesha will need to return up to that amount every day to the Root River. If on any day that is in excess of the amount that they, of the annual average from the previous year, then the excess flow would go to the Fox. And the rationale for that is that that excess flow is going to be from infiltration and inflow into the sewer system, and so it's going to be local Mississippi River water that really should belong and stay in the Fox River Basin. And then this next question is, how will the return wastewater system be monitored so that volumes meet application requirements? You know, that's really an engineering question. That's something that, we've got a lot of engineers at the DNR, and there's, you know, certain thresholds you can set, some kind of weir at the wastewater system that says, here's the threshold. Those details are the kinds of things that when we talk about a final decision, you know, coming back to the department would lay out all the specifications of exactly what they have to meet and how that's going to be regulated and what kinds of information they need to report to the DNR. Have any other bordering counties like Waukesha applied for Lake Michigan water anywhere in the Great Lakes? No, this is the first straddling county, community in a straddling county diversion application. Will approval set any precedent for approval for other applications? That's a matter of opinion. You know, I tend to think that the facts of any given situation really affect what the outcome of that decision is, and any of these situations, after working on this for five years, the facts and the specifics of the situation are all going to be really different. However, I'm sure that anytime you have any kind of review that's used as a guide, one of the things with this is we don't have anybody else to look to of how they made decisions on these criteria, so that's been up for the State of Wisconsin to figure out. And that's what I got here.
A couple of questions. One, what is the role of the tribes and sovereign nations in the process? Wisconsin's compact implementing statute and the compact require consultation with tribes. We have been doing that along the way with various stages of this application. And if it were to be forwarded to the regional body, the compact requires consultation with tribes and First Nations. Second question is, how does the Waukesha application not meet some of the compact's most important requirements? The department's draft technical review states that it does meet the compact's criteria. You'll hear differently from some other people who've made comments on the application, but Wisconsin's draft conclusion is that the application does meet the compact's criteria.
We got, oh, we got some more. Somebody else? You have some questions?
Yeah, a few questions. Jen?
You have some questions?
Yeah, a few questions. So, I have a question here. What restriction to future growth would be imposed on Waukesha? Any restrictions if the diversion is approved would be, the water supply service area would set the outer bounds to which any diversion could be, water could go. So if they wanted to expand outside any approved diversion area, they would need to submit a new application to us and to the other Great Lakes states. When did Wisconsin pass the service area law? I believe that was in 2009, it's 281.348. And then when is, 2007. When did Wisconsin pass, or what is the, what time is the full build-out for? Waukesha and its application expects to serve the entire service area in 2050.
So, I heard that Waukesha has the ability to take care of radium in the water, which would be less expensive. Why would they proceed to want water from Lake Michigan? So I believe this is referring to the Compact Implementation Coalition alternative that's been projected or provided. And essentially, there's differences in terms of the demand that's being calculated. So, I don't remember the exact demand, but that's looking at a demand of around 7 million gallons a day versus what we reviewed in the application of 10.1 or at that 8.5. And so the, the city is looking at providing water that they believe meets the long-term needs for the community. And then this next question I have is, how much will Waukesha County's ongoing development affect its future water needs and increase the amount of water diversion needed? So, with this application, this application's for a specific amount for a specific area, all tied to the city of Waukesha and the water supply service area connected to that city. It doesn't really relate to the broader county water demands, the county, Waukesha County water demands. So, if at any point in the future, there, you know, they say the diversion was approved at that 10.1 threshold, if there was ever an interest in increasing what that diversion volume would be, that would trigger the requirement to go through this process again. So, any, you know, whatever approval, if they got an approval, if it got forwarded and it got approved all the way down, whatever that approval amount would be, would be set. And then if at some point in the future there was an interest in, in, an increase in that diversion, that would trigger a whole new application. Do we have any more? Yeah, Nikki's got one.
I have a few questions here on return flow. One of the questions is, what will the impact on the Root River be? And that, that's kind of a long answer, but we'll talk a little bit about the impacts in the draft EIS on page 163. There are, there's a whole section that talks about the impacts from wastewater discharge, flow and flooding impacts, sediments, and geomorphology, and then also the fishery. And one of the things that our fisheries biologist looked at is supplementing flow in the past, and with the additional wastewater return of approximately 15 CFS, will actually provide more flow in the river for our habit, for our steelhead facility on the Root River. And you can see in the EIS, we talk about both positive and negative impacts. Also in our technical review, we call it R5, we look at any potential impacts to the Root River, and we go kind of through the different things that they will need to improve with their wastewater treatment to provide water that's clean coming in and that will protect fish and aquatic life. Another question is, is the Root River, that will be the returned water to Lake Michigan, able to handle the 10 MGD flows daily in the event of a large rainfall? And does this place properties along that river in jeopardy? We did look at the, the different scenarios that Waukesha came up with for return flow, and the DNR did help develop the alternative six, which is returning the 10.1 MGD per day. And we did this specifically to control the flooding during these large storm events. And during something such as the 100-year flood event, it would be about a quarter inch or less of flow coming in during that time. The last question here is, will blended radium containing water derived from Waukesha County wells be part of the volume returned to Lake Michigan? The department expects that, that the wells in Waukesha County will probably only be used for emergency purposes only, so there won't be blended radium water going back to the Root River. Thanks.
What was that, excuse me, what was that last statement? Went off the?
They, they won't, the, there won't be blended water coming back with, that has radium in it to the Root River.
I had another question that was on one of Nikki's, related to measuring water conservation program effects. It's a great question. This is a, it's something that's really notoriously difficult to measure, break it down into different components. Right now, it's kind of the baseline, everything's decreasing, new, new fixtures, new appliances, new practices, water use per capita is decreasing across globally, so that's going on in the background. Then there's parts of the programs, when the utility works directly with a commercial or industrial customer, they can look at their meters and say, well, we did this practices with them and their use dropped by X percent over the year, so they can measure that directly. Or rebate programs for replacing our toilets, that's pretty simple to measure, we, you know, give rebates for 100 toilets that reduce the volume of water, extra flush, you can kind of figure out how much less water you're using. But a lot of the program is, a lot of the measurement of conservation effect is, is tied into things like outreach, is that how do you, can't really measure outreach. So you go and you do things at schools or different public events that promote water conservation. These do have a known effect, but you can't really measure them directly, you have to try to infer them over time, looking at changing backgrounds. So that becomes a very vague sort of answer to that question. So, we can see that in Waukesha's, the utility, starting about 2006 is when they really started to implement their programs. Water use per capita had been declining for the city, but there's a little bit of a point of inflection that starts to move down at that point. My casual observation is, I think that you could see it in there, but to directly measure and say what, what of that is specifically do their conservation programs, I don't think is really an empirically knowable sort of answer.
I don't think we have any other questions that we have to answer, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna switch gears here and move towards the public hearing portion. It's gonna take a couple of minutes to just make sure the court reporters set up and get ourselves organized, but we will start that promptly as soon as we're able to. We've got people's hearing, speaking slips, and we'll take those and let people know kind of when they're coming up for that. And I'm gonna try and turn off the projector here.
Can we ask follow-up questions? I already turned mine in.
You never turn yours?
I did, but I had a follow-up question.
You write it down.
Hi. I just wanna see if I'm trying to turn this off.
Why don't I just come to you?
Oh, okay, well, they might write down.
Write it down.
Cause I would like to publicly answer, I couldn't get a card.
Oh, okay, well, they might write down.
I would like to publicly answer, I couldn't get a card.
Well, it's only a matter of time before they jump on that train, but I think that you have a natural hesitation, which is sometimes you like.
Yeah, they'll be all.
I'm wondering why they don't, they just like, shearing treatment, and why not take the next step and make it possible, it's probably way back in the past, Waukesha.
And, and it would be, you know, they would come back and say, and, and they could recycle
Yeah, they could, if they could use the Sanibel.
They have far more, they have a lot of water.
They have much more, they have, they have, they have, well, you know, one reflection
Yes, we, this thing just, we don't, we can't, we can't, we can't.
Excuse me, can I have your attention, please? We're gonna go ahead and get started with the public hearing. I had promised one person here that I would answer one more question, they had not gotten a card right at the beginning. And this question is, why doesn't the money from the diversion go to a single nonprofit or shared entity? As in, why doesn't it go, why does it go to Oak Creek instead? Well, Oak Creek's a water utility, all of the water utilities in the state are regulated by the Public Service Commission, that's how they get their rates set. And as a water utility, they need, they have costs that they incur for both distribution and treatment of that water. And so that's what the money that goes towards for any utility in the state that, you know, that provides water to the public, and that would be the same situation in this case where Oak Creek would be providing the water to the Waukesha Water Utility. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Judy Ohm, who's gonna run the public hearing tonight, or this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Really? Thank you all for coming. I'd like to welcome you to today's hearing. I'd like to welcome you to today's hearing. My name is Judy Mills-Ohm. I'm an attorney with the DNR Bureau of Legal Services. I've been asked to conduct this hearing today. With me at the table are Dave Seibert with Environmental Analysis Section of DNR and Shaila Pfeiffer, who gave the presentation and answered questions earlier today. There's other DNR staff throughout the room that are here today. The purpose of the hearing is to receive your comments on the draft technical review and draft environmental impact statement that the department prepared for the city of Waukesha's proposed diversion of Great Lakes water for public water supply with return flow to Lake Michigan. Under the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence River Basin Water Resources Compact, commonly referred to as the compact, the city of Waukesha is a community within a straddling county, which means the city's boundaries are in a county that lies partly within the Great Lakes Basin and partly outside of the basin. Therefore, the city of Waukesha must apply to the Department of Natural Resources in order to divert Lake Michigan water to the city. Most of you have signed appearance slips. If you have not yet signed one, I'd like you, to ask you to please sign in, especially if you would like to present an oral comment at the hearing. You do need to sign the form. We'd also like to have a record of everyone that was here, so even if you're not speaking, I would ask you to fill out a form. DNR has set this tape, time and place for the hearing, August 18th, 2015, 2 o'clock, at the Zilber School of Public Health UW-Milwaukee campus in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, for a public informational hearing on the draft technical review and draft environmental impact statement prepared by Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the proposed diversion. An informational presentation was held immediately before this hearing at 1 o'clock in the same room, and the public also had an opportunity to ask questions of DNR staff following the informational presentation. This hearing is being held pursuant to Sections 1.11 and 281.346 sub 9 of the Wisconsin statutes and Section NR 150.30 sub 3 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code. This hearing is informational in nature, it is not a contested case hearing, it's not adversarial. The purpose of the hearing is to hear your comments on the draft technical report and draft environmental impact statement. The hearing was noticed on the department's website and in the Wisconsin State Journal, the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, the Racine Times, and the Waukesha Freeman, so all notice requirements of the statutes have been complied with. In lieu of or in addition to an oral statement at today's hearing, written comments will be be accepted by the department through August 28, 2015. Written comments should be sent to Ms. Ashley Hoekstra either via email or hard copy at the address in the hearing notice. Written statements will have the same weight and effect as oral statements made at today's hearing. We have held the hearing last night in Waukesha and we're holding another hearing in Racine at 6:30 this evening. DNR will then review the public comments related to the draft technical review and review and summarize all the public comments we receive on the environmental impact statement. Be sure to provide us with your email or other address if you would like to receive a response to comments and the final EIS. The department will prepare a final EIS and final technical review following the comment period. If DNR determines in its final technical review that the city's application is approvable under the Great Lakes Compact, the department will forward the application to the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence River Water Resources Regional Body, which consists of the governors of the other Great Lakes states and the premiers of the Canadian provinces of Quebec and Ontario for their review and consideration, and also to the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence River Basin Water Resources Council, also known as the Compact Council, which consists of the governors of the other Great Lakes states. The Compact Council would need to unanimously approve the diversion before any state permits could be processed for the diversion proposal. We very much appreciate that all of you have come out to today's hearing. We'd like to hear from as many of you as possible, and we've received appearance slips from over 40 of you. Because of the fact that we'd like to give everyone a chance to speak and because of the fact that you can also submit oral... Our written comments, we'll limit the oral comments to two minutes per person. We will, as I said, be accepting written comments until August 28. There's a few ground rules I'd like to go over. This is a big room. There's a lot of people here. And given the number of people here and the fact that everyone would like to be heard, I'd like to ask you to respect all the other people that come forward to give comments. I'd like to ask you to keep any side conversations to the hallways. Please do not speak among yourselves in the room because that makes it hard for others to hear the people that are speaking. We'd like everyone that's here to focus their attention on the person who's speaking and to respect their opinions. When you come up to speak, what... The way... The process I'll follow is I'll read the first three names of the people. The first name I read is the person who will speak. The other two are sort of on deck, so they'll sit in the chairs over there. We will begin by taking comments from elected officials. And once you're at the podium, you have two minutes to speak. I'd like you to state your name, your address, and then begin your statement. When you have 30 seconds left in your allotted time, there'll be a yellow card that goes up to advise you of that fact. And when your time is up, there'll be a red card that goes up. We ask you to please respect the time periods so that everyone will have a chance to speak. So I will now call on the first three people who are elected representatives. Tom Barrett, Sean Riley, and Chris Ably.
Good afternoon and welcome to Milwaukee. We appreciate your willingness to listen to our comments on this very important issue. My history with this issue goes back to the mid-1990s when I was a member of Congress. It was brought to my attention that the city of Waukesha had a radium problem. And I was sympathetic then. I am still sympathetic to the problems that our neighbor to the west has. At that time, I wanted to be a good neighbor and find a way for us to work together to address this situation. When I became mayor in 2004, I continued to be concerned about this issue. And that's why in 2012, when this issue was brought to the city of Milwaukee, the city of Milwaukee did pass a resolution that directed us to begin negotiations with the city of Waukesha for the sale of water. That resolution made it clear that we were talking about the service area, the current service area for the city of Waukesha. Again, we accepted their arguments that there was a radium issue that needed to be addressed. Subsequent to that, as you all are aware, there have been scientific studies and engineering studies that have questioned that. But that is and has been the official position of the city of Milwaukee, that we would be willing to negotiate with the city of Waukesha over the sale of water to Waukesha, to the town... To the city of Waukesha property. This is where the plot thickens because it was much to my surprise that when the representatives came into my office and showed me the service area, it was not just the city of Waukesha. But as you are all aware, it included the town of Waukesha, parts of the town of Genesee, Peewaqui, and Delafield. None of those, of course, are in the city of Waukesha's current area. When I looked at the compact, which did not include the jurisdictional issue about the service supply area, I questioned whether it could ever work. I'm not the only one who questioned that. In a letter dated August 2, 2012, the DNR secretary's step acknowledges the same. Wisconsin urged the other Great Lakes states and provinces to agree to incorporate the concept of service area planning into the language of the compact. It didn't happen. It didn't happen. So I'm asking you to do two things. One, I'm asking you to send this back to the city of Waukesha to have it have language that comports with the Great Lakes compact. There is no language in the Great Lakes compact dealing with this water service supply area. And second, to look at the engineering studies that have been done subsequent to our resolution to see whether the city of Waukesha currently needs it. So again, two very straightforward requests here. One, send it back to make sure it complies with the Great Lakes compact, which it does not by the secretary's own acknowledgement in her letter. And two, to look at the new scientific studies that are out there to see whether it currently does need the water. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Sean Riley.
We need the sound. Can you hear that? Okay. Sean Riley, Mayor of the City of Waukesha. Thank you for the opportunity to provide my comments. As a mayor of Waukesha, my job is to see that the needs of the families and businesses in Waukesha have the resources and services they need. No service is more important than a healthy and dependable water supply. My campaign for mayor emphasized that I was in favor of obtaining water from the Great Lakes. And I won that election against the incumbent. There are many that portray the review of our application as a choice between providing safe drinking water for Waukesha or protecting the Great Lakes. The truth is, our application does both. Our use will not harm the Great Lakes or set a precedent for harm to the Great Lakes by others. Our application meets the terms of the compact. Its approval will provide a strong and essential legal defense against any attempted water withdrawals and diversions that do not meet the terms of the compact. Approval of our application will not lead to hundreds of requests for Great Lakes water. The Alliance for the Great Lakes estimated that four communities similar to Waukesha may apply for water under the compact within the next decade. It's frustrating that there is argument regarding this state service area and that it is... The argument is that it is inconsistent with the compact. Governor Doyle's administration, who helped write the compact, also wrote the service area law. When the compact was adopted, it was expected that Waukesha's application would include the proposed service area. During the two years that Wisconsin's compact bill was discussed and negotiated, not a single person or group opposed the provision that created the water supply plan. It is simply bad faith to support a law that requires an expanded service area and then insists that the application be denied because of an expanded service area. In summary, the DNR's extensive analysis got it right. Lake Michigan is the only reasonable water supply for Waukesha. Let's move forward so Waukesha can have a sustainable and healthy water supply, and let's prove that the compact does and will protect the Great Lakes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Following the... Next commenter, I'd like to ask Robert Baumann, Andy Ryland, and Joe Piper to come up. And next is Chris Ably.
Thank you. It's Ably, actually, but I'm getting used to that. So I'm going to echo, in the interest of time, the mayor made a number of points I was going to make. I actually don't think the application comports with the compact, and I'll skip straight to this. I live in Milwaukee, but I love Waukesha. I love the city of Waukesha. I love the county. I have a great working relationship with the current and the former county exec. We have worked together and saved each other a lot of money. I also love solutions. One of the things that's being talked about here is the cost of the pipeline is about $200 million. That's the straight cost. That's not the operating, maintenance, or ongoing pumping costs, or certainly the interest cost, because if they don't have cash right now, you're going to have to pay interest on it. Right now, as it turns out, the cost of the latest efficient... There's a company called Nedia. This is just an example. They have a showerhead, a company called Apple. The head of Apple has invested, so has the head of Google and a bunch of people. It's a showerhead. It puts more water on you, more, when you take a shower than a normal showerhead. Thing is, it costs 70% less. It uses 70% less water. Here's the thing. There are 70,000 people who live in the city of Waukesha. You could buy every single one of them, and I know that's more than households, but you could buy every single one of them, one of these showerheads, for $14 million. No operating cost, no ongoing maintenance, and you'd save 70% of the water. And, and, you'd save every one of your taxpaying citizens 70% on... And they've got this neat calculator on their site, on their own water bill. That's one giant dent that you absolutely could make in this problem. But here's the point I'm trying to make. That's one. There's plenty others. I like working with people to find solutions, and I am eager, excited, and enthusiastic to work with my good friends in Waukesha to help find a solution that doesn't send 10 million gallons a day back through the Root River, through our county, past a lot of taxpayers, residents, and people who all, like all of us in the room, care about the natural environment and the treasure that is the Great Lakes. I'd like that a lot more. It'd be a lot cheaper. I think most people would be happy. And I think the goal is we can get to water for everybody, economic development, save a whole lot of money, and oh, by the way, it is actually cleaner. That's something that's worth working hard to get to. Thank you.
All right. I apologize upfront for mispronouncing people's names, but next is Robert Baumann.
Get me right.
All right.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Bob Baumann. I'm an alderman at the City of Milwaukee. I represent downtown Milwaukee and the Northwest Side neighborhoods. As the mayor pointed out, the city council and the mayor's office did involve... Did engage in some extensive discussions about the potential sale of water to Waukesha back in 2012. I was the chair of the committee that handled all those proceedings, Chair of Public Works. I'm also the author of the city's... City of Milwaukee's resolution establishing the criteria for water sales to adjoining communities. And I'm also author of the resolution which approved the commencement of negotiations, although by no means was there a guarantee that there would be an agreement. I want that to be very clear. There were still major issues that the city of Milwaukee saw with this diversion application, which would be subsumed in any sales agreement that the city would involve... Be involved in. So there was no guarantee that an agreement would ever have been reached. But we were willing to talk. And the big hangup was the service area issue. And we had extensive research done by our Department of City Development, by our Legislative Resource, by Legislative Reference Bureau, and as well as our water utility, which is a very large and sophisticated organization. And the message we consistently came back was, the city of Waukesha just doesn't have the need for Great Lakes diversion. They do not generate the volume, given there are other potential sources, to justify the need. Only when you bootstrap onto these additional geography, these townships, these basically unincorporated areas, do you create the theoretical need in the future by assuming the new water is going to induce growth, development, and demand. It's a classic bootstrap argument to get to the end result of what we saw as a very clear objective of this diversion request was to fuel continued growth and expansion in Waukesha generally, city Waukesha specifically, and Waukesha County generally. So as far as an environmental impact issue, which is what we're here to ultimately talk about, the impact is sprawl. And the impact sprawl has on the environment as a whole, on economic justice in major cities like Milwaukee, like Cleveland, like Buffalo, who are also on the Great Lakes, who may also be affected by this very incredible, very significant precedent-setting decision. So I urge the DNR to find that this particular application, as currently constituted, does not meet the requirements of the compact, and to make a very clear statement for the record that the adverse environmental impact is the continuing effect of urban sprawl on the greater Milwaukee area. Thank you.
Next is Andy Ryland.
Hi, my name is Andy Ryland. I live in Waukesha, and I'm currently representing District 13 as a common council member and the current common council president. And I also want to thank Mayor Barrett for setting the precedence on the time limit here. As a resident and someone that listens to many within our city, I find that we are all sharing a strong desire to obtain safe drinking water and to make sure that the solution is one that is reliable and long-lasting. I'm confident from the briefings and from the exam... Examining the extensive presentation that this will meet that correct solution. Our desire and support to protect the Great Lakes does not stop with the drainage basin boundary. If Waukesha residents believe this protection project would harm the Great Lakes, you would hear our voices and concerns. We realize this project will actually benefit tributary and not adversely impact Lake Michigan. In preparing this analysis, the city looked at all the viable options and made changes to the initial proposal in response to comments by the public and DNR. The city's technical team reduced the volume of water to reflect the latest data and the successful results of our extended water conservation program. Our residents understand and take water conversation... Conservation seriously. We utilize national-recognized experts in developing our program, and will continue and improve it. The DNR and others also urged us to move the return flow away from Underwood Creek to the Root River. Despite substantial additional costs, the city made the change to our proposal in order to benefit the Root River and to enhance the DNR egg collection station on the Root. I want to emphasize the need for a well-engineered and reliable long-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Joe Piper is Terry Wiggins, Jody Havish-Seneca, and Cheryl Nen.
Very good. Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Joe Piper. I'm an alderman in the city of Waukesha. I've had the pleasure of serving the fourth district since May of 2006. Serve as the current Chair of the Finance Committee and has also served as past Common Council President. I want to thank everyone for coming this afternoon to discuss this very important issue, not only for our region, but for the city of Waukesha. What I'd like to do is to assure the DNR and the public that there has been multitude of resources and time spent on this very important issue. My... One of my first meetings upon becoming alderman back in 2006 was to meet with staff to understand the current need for a sustainable water source in the city of Waukesha. My wife can attest to many evenings where she has gone to bed long before I have, where there's been discussions and meetings on this very important issue. So with that, I want to assure the public that this is something that the city of Waukesha, its residents, and our elected officials have not taken lightly, and is something that is very important to the future of this region and very important to the future of the city of Waukesha. Our goal, my goal, is to meet the needs of our residents. Our goal is not to become the first or the largest city in the state of Wisconsin. There's been a lot of discussion around how much we... How little we can actually grow as a city. And our goal, as like I said, is to serve the needs of our residents today and well into the future. We're a very proud community. We're an urban community, and we have many of the same issues of our neighbors, including the city of Milwaukee. There seems to be a popular misconception that we all live on five-acre lots and in million-dollar homes. I can assure you, I don't. And I would be more than happy to give a tour of the city to anyone who's interested in learning more about our wonderful community of Waukesha. Lastly, I'd like to thank the DNR and staff for their work on this project. I'd like to thank the work of our city staff and the common council. I urge your support. And in closing, this is truly, in my opinion, the essence of regional cooperation. Thank you.
Next is Terry Wiggins.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. My comment this aft...
Can you hear it here?
Sorry. My comment this afternoon... Can you hear me now? My comment this afternoon is not a technical comment. We will hear arguments this afternoon that appeal to our heads, talking technicalities about the numbers and facts or facts, however you want, about the issues. I believe that an appeal to the heart is also important. And I believe that as a person of faith, that we must protect all creation... All of God's creation, as we call it, or some call it the interdependent web of all life, of which we are a part. And therefore, I believe that our decisions... which we are a part. And therefore, I believe that our decisions today must—or—the decision that the DNR makes—must have minimal to no impact on Lake Michigan and on those—and—the rivers and all of those who—who might be subject to whatever damage might come from spills or what have you, and so I urge caution, and that's—that's my comment.
Jody Havish-Senekin.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to comment. As an attorney with Midwest Environmental Advocates, I will focus my comments on critical shortfalls of the draft EIS, which if they persist in the final document, will expose the EIS to legal challenge and a finding of inadequacy. Under state and federal law, the state's EIS must identify and rely upon relevant, up-to-date information and contingencies germane to the proposed taxpayer-funded project. Wisconsin DNR's draft EIS, however, fails short of this basic standard by virtue of, one, the agency's failure to examine an important and viable alternative, and, two, the extent of uncertainty remaining with respect to important aspects of compact compliance, significantly undermining informed and meaningful public participation. First and foremost, the draft EIS fails to examine, as part of its alternatives analysis, water demand estimates and modeling predicated upon the City of Waukesha's existing water supply service area, notwithstanding repeated notifications of the legal and technical infeasibility of the city's proposed water supply service area. This failure on the part of the Wisconsin DNR to examine a viable alternative undoubtedly calls into question the adequacy of the draft EIS. Indeed, federal appellate courts across the country have held EISs deficient on this very basis, reasoning that the existence of a viable but unexamined alternative renders an environmental impact statement inadequate. Moreover, too much uncertainty still remains in the draft EIS regarding critical factors that Congress intended the agency to consider pertaining to the Great Lakes Compact, including—the feasibility of the connection with the outlying areas, as well as what if any conservation has been accomplished in those outlying areas. If Wisconsin DNR fails to address these significant information gaps before going out to the public with its final EIS, or limits the opportunity for public comment only to the instant inadequate draft EIS, the public's legally guaranteed right to participate in the compact's decision-making process will have been compromised to a degree that renders the state's EIS legally infirm under state and federal law. Thank you.
Commenter Michael Hahn, Barbara Richards, and Bart Adams, please come forward. And next is Cheryl Nen.
Hi, thank you. My name is Cheryl Nen. I'm here today on behalf of Milwaukee Riverkeeper and also the Compact Implementation Coalition. I'm a little confused why we had three minutes in Waukesha yesterday, and there's two minutes today in Milwaukee. I'm not sure if Racine will have one minute. Hopefully not, but I will try to keep my comments brief and really focus on addressing the community and need requirements of the compact. So the compact and Wisconsin's implementing legislation both require that to apply for a diversion, the community within Esthraling County needs to show that they are without adequate supplies of potable water, and also that there's no reasonable water supply alternative within the basin in which the community is located. And this would include conservation of existing water supplies. So evaluated against these core tenets of the compact, the City of Waukesha's application, we feel, is deficient in several critical areas in relation to the community and need requirements. And these deficiencies, we feel like, are not adequately addressed in the DNR's draft EIS and technical review, which I'll explain quickly. The City of Waukesha's definition of community and need is inconsistent throughout its application. When calculating how much the water—the how much city water—how much water the city will need in the future, Waukesha includes portions of neighboring communities in the definition of their community. When considering how to best conserve and use water efficiently—efficiently, the city does not include portions of neighboring communities in the definition of its community. So when Waukesha tries to make the case that it lacks potable water supply alter—lacks potable water supplies and lacks alternatives, it cites the historic deep aquifer drawdown and the radium in the deep aquifer, but it never makes similar arguments for those other communities that are included in the application. And that's because those other communities don't have a need for water. None of the neighboring communities—Jenna C., Waukesha, Delafield, and Pawaki—have demonstrated a need for a new water source. Some have even said publicly that they—they don't need Lake Michigan water in the near future and possibly never. Portions of these communities also do not meet the requirements for water conservation, as others have mentioned. Thus, these additional communities cannot be included in the application because they don't meet the basic requirements of the compact. There's no info in the EIS to the technical review about why these additional areas are included, including any documentation of—of problems with their quality, their quantity, or any information on conservation efforts that have been implemented by those communities. So, thank you.
Next is Michael Hahn.
I'm Mike Hahn, Deputy Director of the Southeastern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and thank you for the opportunity to comment this afternoon. In December 2010, Sewer PAC published a regional water supply plan for the entire seven-county southeastern Wisconsin region. Preparation of the plan was guided by a 32-member advisory committee. The plan objective was to make recommendations for providing a sustainable water supply through the year 2035, once again, for the entire seven-county southeastern Wisconsin region. The plan evaluated surface water, groundwater, and groundwater supply sources, and the effects of expanded shallow groundwater sources on surface water resources such as streams, lakes, and wetlands. The recommended plan, as it relates to the City of Waukesha, calls for the city to seek a Lake Michigan supply consistent with the requirements of the Great Lakes Compact and state law, and provides four options for return of treated wastewater to Lake Michigan. The plan specifically recognized that more detailed engineering, legal, and environmental analysis would be required. Of all the options considered, it was concluded that the recommended plan best meets the study planning objectives and provides long-term sustainability of the deep aquifer, reductions in chloride discharges to surface waters, improvement in groundwater-derived base flow. The recommended plan was approved by the advisory committee and the Regional Planning Commission. The DNR draft technical review of the city application describes stringent effluent limits that would need to be placed on discharges from the Waukesha wastewater treatment plant to the Root River. It is very important that the state permit for the plant reflects such stringent limits to protect the designated uses and water quality of the Root River and Lake Michigan. The plan also recognized potential water quantity impacts on the Fox River. We recommend that DNR provide additional analysis in the EIS of the effects of anticipated reductions in the flow of treated wastewater from Waukesha to the Fox River, quantifying the spatial extent along the river downstream of the wastewater treatment plant discharge, for which significant water quantity and quality and associated aquatic life—aquatic life effects might be expected to extend. Thank you.
Next is Barbara Richards.
Hello, my name is Barbara Richards. I live at 3210 North 83rd Street. That's a few blocks south of Lisbon Avenue, which runs along a ridge to what once were wetland areas left by the retreating glaciers. Consider Appleton Avenue, Fond du Lac Avenue, Beloit Road. Today, the town of Lisbon is not on a par with the other settlements. Circumstances change. Our settlements were primarily along waterways, then along railroad lines, and presently along paved roads. Some have lasted and some have faded. Growth projected on the past or even projected conditions can create a fantasy promise. We face an unprecedented, unmodeled future. We live on a finite planet with finite resources, facing an ecological, economic, social challenge. We see symptoms all around us. Our individual lifestyle choices are a place to get at the root. We can find abundance rather than scarcity with the right foresight. Our settlements can become communities. How shall we respond? Shall we sign up for the next home tour along country roads, past former farmlands? Might we rather look forward seven generations and consider the acts which we are contemplating? Growth such as we see all around us now is a chimera that will devour our grandchildren's grandchildren. We must draw the line. We must hold to our potential to the act for the good of others yet unborn. What any of our communities may become in the next hundred years is unimaginable, yet we know that water will be essential for that life to exist. I believe our task is to stand against the flow of greed, of shortsightedness, blindness, of injustice. We cannot— [inaudible] efficiency economy. We must deny the water requests—
Commenter, please, Jimmy Parra, Tom Gylash, and Charlie Wire, please come forward. And next is Bart Adams.
Good afternoon, and thank you. I'd like to thank the DNR for their efforts, and frankly, all of the news outlets who have provided a lot of information to common people. I'm a CPA. I'm not an environmentalist. I'm not an engineer. I look at things very analytically. I look at things and say, you know, why do things happen the way they do? I also bring with me a certain bias. My bias is, I have lived my entire life, basically, in this community. I've lived 60 out of 61 years in Milwaukee County. 61 out of 61 years within the basin. I'm a Boy Scout leader, have been for over 30 years. We believe very strongly in environmental protection. Looking at what has happened in going through this process, I can say that I appreciate the efforts that the DNR has gone through. It seems to have gone through in a very logical approach, trying to take the facts and going from point A to point B and thereon after. You've looked at the judge's order. You've looked at the various rulings and the rules that you have to follow as far as the area that has to be covered. You've looked at the Great Lakes Compact. You've looked at the water level depletion in Waukesha County and the basin. You've looked at the 100% return that is going to come, and that, really, to my mind, when people refer to this as a diversion, is incorrect. It's a diversion and a return. It will improve the Root River area. It provides and supports regional cooperation. This will assist in the proper management of the regional demands of water in the Waukesha and the Mississippi Basin. It's a long-range solution, frankly, which is much better than many of the political, short-range solutions that we see today. I appreciate the DNR analysis, and in summary, I believe that this is a well-thought-out, long-range solution to an issue that we all have to deal with. Thank you.
Next is Jimmy Parra.
Good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Parra. I'm an attorney with Midwest Environmental Advocates, which is also a partner organization of the Compact Implementation Coalition. Is that not—I'll try to—all right. So I would just like to echo the concerns that some of our Compact Implementation Coalition partners have raised, but my—my comments will focus on the return flow aspect of Waukesha's proposal. You know, we've reviewed Waukesha's proposal and the DNR's evaluation of that proposal, and we do have several specific concerns related to return flow that we will address in our written comments, but for our purposes here today, I just wanted to focus on one sort of overarching concern that we have, and that is that the—the draft technical review leaves several issues related to the return flow unresolved, which in turn limits the ability of the DNR to do a full environmental review of the proposal. And what I mean by that is that the DNR's evaluation of the environmental impacts of the return flow are based largely on draft limits and recommendations, which have not been finalized through any sort of permitting process. And as many of us are aware, the WIFTI's permitting process is an iterative process, and draft limits and recommendations often change in response to public comments, new information, comments from the applicant, and in some cases, court orders. For example, right now, several of the limits and recommendations in the draft technical review are sort of premised on the finding that Waukesha will be a new discharger to the Root River. However, Waukesha and some of its communication to the—the DNR has called that determination into question, saying that they may not actually meet the definition of a new discharger, which—if that determination were to change, the—the WIFTI's permit recommendations, as well as the environmental impacts associated with the return flow, would be dramatically different than what's evaluated in the proposal right now. So this is just one example of the type of determinations that may change once the WIFTI's permitting process goes—is underway, but we would—but we would just offer that these sorts of issues should be resolved prior to regional review, so that the department can be confident that its proposal—that Waukesha's proposal meets the compact's requirements.
Next is Tom Gylash. Sorry if I mispronounced her.
My name is Tom Gulash, and I'm from Manitowoc, Wisconsin, and I am president of the Wisconsin Federation of Great Lakes Sport Fishing Clubs, consists of clubs from Marinette to Kenosha. Everyone in this room is sensitive about fresh drinking water, but what we see here is a short-term solution that's going to lead to long-term problems. A third-party analysis by two engineering firms has shown that the DNR has come to some inaccurate conclusions. The DNR is also proposing a precedent-setting water diversion, so other alternatives must be examined thoroughly. Water diversion is a last resort and is not an alternative for convenience, expansion, or future use. The burden placed on 10 other regional governments will be substantial, so the solution to the Waukesha issue—Waukesha issue must not be superficial or have limited options when considering the magnitude of their request. Approval of the diversion can affect 20% of the world's fresh drinking water, not just Lake Michigan. This is not a good idea because of the potential problems and too many future unknowns. This is—this request should be sent back to the City of Waukesha, and the request should be denied.
Next is Charles Wire, and after him, we have Amanda Payne, Mary Bayer, and Robert McCleod.
My name is Charles Wire. I reside in Two Rivers, Wisconsin. I'm happy to say that I was born in a house 300 feet on the shoreline of Lake Michigan. After my—part of my professional career—the early part in 1974, I moved back to Two Rivers, Wisconsin, and I now live in a house that is 700 feet from the shores of Lake Michigan, so I'm very familiar with the problems and—and unfortunate situations of the lake. It's been terribly abused, as well as the rest of the lakes have been terribly abused. But this situation isn't necessarily just the abuse of the lake physically. It's—it's a—a—a compromise of a very hard and long-worked-out compromise for the lake, for all—the—for all the Great Lakes. If this comp—if this situation is compromised at this point, and this would only be the first issue, the first time this came up, it only softens the way for more compromises to make, and more comp—it's kind of like a hole in a dam. It may be only as big as a finger hole to start with, but it continually grows. So before we get into that situation, I hope we give great concern to this thing and—and disregard this attempt. The other thing I would like to say is that, on a financial standpoint, the people in the City of Waukesha will have an increase in their water bills for the year from $260 to somewhere around $800 to $900 annually. And for why? It was totally unneeded. You're talking about a $150 million project here, which—which could be done for—for—for very little less. In fact, the—the city—the—in—the city people's water would probably be about the same, or maybe just slightly larger per year, so you're saving the hundreds and hundreds of dollars annually. Thank you.
Amanda Payne.
Good afternoon. My name's Amanda Payne. I'm a resident of the City of Waukesha, and in addition, I'm here to present comments on behalf of the Waukesha County Business Alliance. The Alliance is the largest business association in Waukesha County, representing more than 1,000 companies and organizations. Collectively, our members employ more than 60,000 people in the region. Approximately 25% of our members are located within the City of Waukesha, and they employ several thousand individuals who work and live in Waukesha. The Alliance continues to stand firm in our support of the city's application for Lake Michigan water. The city's proposal has been carefully vetted by our Infrastructure Policy Committee, our Policy Board, and our Board of Directors. We have spent years updating and educating our entire membership about this issue, and we have asked for their feedback. Support for the city's— Support for the city's application remains widespread among all of our one thousand members. We remain convinced that Waukesha's application provides the only practical, environmentally sound, and long-term solution. Waukesha has examined many alternatives. All others would have a negative environmental impact and are less protective of public health. The scientific evidence demonstrates that this is the right solution. Thank you.
Is Robert McLeod going to give a... Sorry?
Change my name if you want.
Mary Behr is next, but I'm wondering if Robert McLeod.
No, he left the building.
He left. Okay. So then I'd ask Ezra Meyer, George Meyer, and Anselmo Villarreal to come forward next.
Okay. My name is Mary Behr, and my husband and I live in the city of Waukesha, and I also work in the city. I have watched and learned a lot about the importance of a sustainable water supply for the Waukesha service area through the many years of following this issue. And it also helps when you're married to an engineer with a focus on hydrogeology, but we won't go into that. Today, I want to express my gratitude to all those people and organizations arriving at this point in time. I want to thank the visionaries who wrote the Great Lakes Compact, recognizing that for a straddling county with no other options, that access to Lake Michigan water was critical for the ability to provide safe, clean water for their citizens while returning the, quote, "borrowed" water back to the lake. I want to take... Thank the tireless scientific efforts of the Waukesha Utility Team, Water Utility Team, and Water Commission, especially Dan Dukneak. All of us who have followed the process, read about the multitude of options that were scientifically vetted, testified at many common council meetings, and now can respect and report the final outcome of this lengthy process. And that is, Lake Michigan water is the only viable option for a safe, long-term water supply that will address the radium issue and the needs of the Waukesha Water Service Area now and for generations to come. I also want to say thank you to Waukesha Mayor Riley and the members of the Common Council for their support of this effort. A lot of time, energy, and effort went into arriving at the point we are at today. Thank you for realizing that this application was the right decision for the city of Waukesha and its citizens. And thank you to the DNR, who through five years of study, analysis, challenge, suggestions, and science have moved the Waukesha Water Application to this critical point. Your efforts to make this application the best it could be are recognized and appreciated. Finally, I would like to thank those that oppose this application. Your efforts meant that all possible options were studied, questioned, challenged, reviewed, and yet, the same conclusion was reached. I look forward to the day when the water that comes out of my tap is a clean, safe water that can only be provided to the Waukesha Water Service Area from Lake Michigan. I also look forward to Root River's revitalization through the return flow of Waukesha's treated water. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today.
Meyer.
He's not here, but can you just put him in the back? Thanks.
George Meyer.
Thank you very much. George Meyer, representing the Wisconsin Wildlife Federation, comprised of one hundred and ninety hunting, fishing, trapping groups throughout the state. I'll be brief. There's two issues I'd like to address. One is, yesterday, we heard some conflicting information about the... whether or not sewer service areas were included in the Great Lakes Compact. I've had an opportunity since then, I was not part of those negotiations, to talk to others, which seemed to confirm that what Administrator Ames said indicated, that in fact sewer service areas were not discussed as an alternative in the Waukesha situation, although the city of Waukesha issue was omnipresent during those whole discussions. Deputy Secretary Henderson is very correct, though, on the fact that during the implementation language, statutory language, there was inclusion in the state statute, not the compact, of having sewer service areas be included along with cities. And that was done at the request of the city of Waukesha. What we appear to have is a conflict of laws between an implementing statute and what I would believe, and I think most lawyers would agree, is the controlling language of the compact. What is good, though, is that there is another alternative. We all want clean water, radium-free water for the city of Waukesha. I go back a long way. Nineteen eighty-seven, I headed the Enforcement Division of the Department of National Resources when we first directed the city to treat its radium water. And there's been a string of lawsuits ever since that time. There is an alternative, the no diversion alternative, which takes advantage of the fact we have a rebounding water level sixty to a hundred feet. Then in fact, that there is, at this time, good treatment, ion exchange, or reverse osmosis that can in fact treat the water. It will in fact meet the needs of the current service area to the year 2050. And the best thing for the Red Bears of Waukesha, it's half the price and half the rate increase for them. Thank you very much.
I'd ask John... Or I'm sorry, Dawn Crowley, Bill Sell, and Kristi Meyer to come forward.
Thank you. My name is Anselmo Villarreal, and I'm the executive director of La Casa de Esperanza, a multi-program social service organization that employs one hundred and sixty staff members and serves over two thousand people in need each year in Waukesha, Milwaukee, and Jefferson County. But first of all, I would like to thank the DNR staff for working diligently on this review and for managing the challenges... the challenging situation of being in the middle of people with different views. I can only imagine what you have gone through. Ensuring a safe water supply in Waukesha is a critical issue and that must be addressed to ensure a safe supply of water to Waukesha residents. It is a common misperception that there is no poverty in Waukesha. However, not only is there poverty in Waukesha today, but the trends are alarming. Census data shows that the number of people living in poverty in Waukesha County increased by a hundred and four percent from two thousand to two thousand and twelve. From two thousand to two thousand and ten, the total population in Waukesha grew seven percent, while the Latino community population grew by seventy-two percent. From two thousand and one, two thousand and two school year to the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year, the overall student population in the Waukesha School District grew by eight percent, while the Hispanic population grew by ninety-three percent. From two thousand and eleven... I'm sorry, from two thousand and one to two thousand and eleven, the number of students eligible for free or reduced-price meals in the Waukesha School District nearly doubled, growing from fifteen percent to twenty-nine percent. I feel very strongly that there is a time to focus not on the past and not even on the present, but on the future. There is also a time to act in a spirit of regional cooperation. We must put difference behind us, not act out of a sense of blame or resentment, and support a solution that is in the best interest of those in need in our community, including Waukesha. In closing, I urge you to continue to support the solution that has been developed for us after years of work. The solution will not only harm... Will not harm Lake Michigan, will help the underserved in Waukesha, and will begin a precedent of regional cooperation for others to learn from and to follow. Thank you very much.
Crowley.
Thank you. I'm from Wauwatosa in Milwaukee County, and I have an additional pollution concern beyond the phosphates and temperature and chlorides. And that is the pharmaceuticals that will be flowing from the Waukesha Treatment Plant, which does not filter for the pharmaceuticals. And I'm concerned for the drinking water, but also for the added fish that the DNR estimates will grow in the Root River. So I would ask that the pharmaceutical pollution be reevaluated in the process. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Sell. I live at twenty-eight twenty-seven South Lennox in Milwaukee, in the neighborhood of Bayview, where we think of ourselves as stewards of the Great Lake Michigan because it is our easternmost border. Today, I would like to enlarge the concept of environmental. Why are the planners trying to avoid their first plan to send more water more directly through our city into the Menominee River? Avoiding this city is nothing new, and we citizens watch the negotiations with deep interest. Apparently, Waukesha was still, after thirty years of this position, afraid to look at collaborative efforts to build transit between our two counties. In the larger context of a city being more endangered, more and more managed from the capital, from education to highways to freedom, to bear guns, and underpinned by translation into action by white flight. This Root River solution is another nail in the plantation fence desired by a few powerful people in Waukesha. I submit to the DNR that there is a racial component to the determination to get Lake Michigan water without allowing access to jobs and development, which I believe is the spark that pushes Waukesha to add a new fence. Milwaukee has vacant buildings and are begging for development. While there are some new buses that came out of the federal court settlement, a three-hour commute every day is not a family-oriented solution to commuting. Like President Reagan, I would ask that we tear down these fences and that... Because that destructive thinking puts my African-American brothers and sisters at risk. They need to be near jobs, and the cost of an automobile requires thirty to fifty percent of a low living wage.
Kristi Meyer. And then I would ask Elterine Jankowski Biggers, Paul Trotter, and Sister Mary Ellen Paulson to come forward next.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kristi Meyer, and I'm the Managing Director of Agricultural Health and Clean Water Programs at the Ohio Environmental Council, based out of Columbus, Ohio. The OEC is a statewide nonprofit advocacy organization whose mission is to secure healthy air, land, and water for all who call Ohio home. I've been working on the Great Lakes Compact for more than a decade, and the OEC before me has been working on the development of it for more than two decades. The OEC believes that the application does not comply with the Great Lakes Compact because the city has neither exhausted all options nor is their request reasonable. According to an independent study by Jim Nichols, former director of the U.S. Geological Survey in Michigan and independent consultant now, Waukesha's water demand has been falling since the late nineteen eighties. Yet, the city of Waukesha projects a much higher demand for water in the future. This is inconsistent with historical trends. Even with Waukesha's 2050 water service supply area projected industrial and residential growth, expected total average day demand will be well below the ten-point-one MGD and sixteen-point-seven MGD that Waukesha currently is demanding. As such, the requested amount cannot be considered reasonable. Over the last couple of years, groundwater levels in southeast Wisconsin have been rising, or at the very least stabilizing, according to a recent report... or according to a report authored by Jim Nichols. Recently, two independent engineering firms looked at Waukesha's proposal. They concluded that Waukesha can use its existing deep and shallow water wells to provide ample clean water and meet current and future demands as long as the city invests in three new reverse osmosis plants, which would cost half of the amount of what Waukesha is proposing in its water diversion requests, saving residents and local businesses money while meeting future demands and protecting the health of Waukesha's residents. A favorable decision could ensure the Great Lakes death by a thousand straws, as there are many communities outside of the watershed around the Great Lakes that might be more willing to consider withdrawing Great Lakes water in the future. With a favorable approval of this diversion application, it almost ensures that these future communities would also get favorable approvals, no matter how flawed their proposals may be. For all of these reasons, we respectfully urge the Wisconsin DNR to deny this diversion application. Thank you for this opportunity.
Next is Elterine.
Hello. My name is Elterine Jankowski Biggers. I live at thirty-eight fifty-four West Kylie in Milwaukee. And I thank you for this opportunity for my comments. On June eighteenth, Pope Francis published his Laudato Si, a revolutionary call for all of humanity to solve the complex dual crises of global climate change and social justice. In this document, Pope Francis makes the point that these two challenges are intertwined and must be solved together. Laudato Si is significant because finally, a world leader is challenging us to change our habits before the damage we have done to the environment can no longer be corrected. What is the city of Waukesha's response to this call? Drain Lake Michigan. The Great Lakes Compact was designed by forward-thinking people in two countries for the purpose of protecting the Great Lakes so that the lakes could continue to provide aquatic ecosystems in perpetuity. Permitting Waukesha to redraw the boundaries of this hard-won pact only means that the treaty has no validity whatever or whatsoever. I found it interesting that the studies, which concluded that drawing water from Lake Michigan would have no significant environmental impact, failed to take into account the twenty miles of pipeline which must be constructed. This is ludicrous and irresponsible. Building a twenty-mile pipeline has an environmental impact twenty miles long. Waukesha says it would return treated water to the Root River. Treated water is just that, treated water. Unleashing chemically-treated water into a river threatens the aquatic life of the river and the lake into which it leads. Allowing Waukesha to expand the borders of the Great Lakes Compact will open the floodgates for other municipalities to demand the same thing. The pressure on the lake will continue until all that remains is a humongous mud hole like the completely dried-up RLC in Russia. We cannot allow Waukesha to take water out of Lake Michigan. The city of Waukesha needs to go back to their drawing boards and come up with a different plan to solve their water problems. Pope Francis is calling us to carefully consider how we use our resources and to find alternatives to the environmental abuse which we humans are so adept at doing. Here is our chance to say no to our wasteful ways. Here's our chance to begin the daunting task of changing our mindsets and our habits of choosing the cheapest but most destructive solutions to our environmental problems. We must take the spirit of the Great Lakes Compact to heart. We must support our Great Lake Michigan by just saying no.
Hi, my name is Paul Trotter. I live at... In the vibrant Story Hill neighborhood at four thirty-nine North Fiftieth in the great city of Milwaukee, zip code five-three-two-zero-eight. I am speaking in opposition to this diversion application by the city of Waukesha for several reasons. While I'm empathetic with the city of Waukesha for clean water, my greatest concerns are that this application contains potential expanded service areas. I can understand including the city's own projected development, but I have strong objections to including the communities of Delafil, Genesee, and Pilwaki. This, to me, is giving the okay to more strip malls, urban sprawl, and less motivation for water conservation. By including the expanded service area, Waukesha greatly inflates the amount of water it needs and thereby tries to justify using Great Lakes water rather than local groundwater. In its application, Waukesha is proposing to double the size of its water service area and thereby contravening the standards of the Great Lakes Compact. This is not acceptable. It is also my understanding that the deep-water aquifer is beginning to replenish itself, that methods for treating the radium tainted water has not been fully explored. My last concern is the tremendous cost to the hard-working taxpayers of Waukesha. The cost will rise from approximately two hundred dollars per year to over nine hundred dollars per year. Thank you for this opportunity, and many thanks to the hard-working employees of the DNR.
People to come forward, please, are Andy Andre, Leslie Junkie, and Timothy Schaefer. And next is Sister Mary Ellen Paulson.
I'm Sister Mary Ellen Paulson, and I live at twenty-three sixty-seven South Eighty-Fourth Street in West Dallas. My brother Dwayne is on the council out in Waukesha on the county board. He also served on the city council there. And I know if he were here, he would saying... He would say that proposal has to go through. I certainly am not going to deny him that. I am here to say a special thank you to the DNR. I am here to say a special thank you to the DNR for all the information that you handed out here today, all the positive aspects, all the aspects of knowing that ideas that come in can be roped into this, and that is fantastically wonderful. As I say, I remember in 2007 when the Compact was signed. Fantastic, wonderful, and I certainly am going to be agreeing with the Pope on saying we need to take care of our planet, each and every one of us. But my biggest thought today is thank you. Thank you so very much, and good luck as you move forward with it.
Andy Andre is next.
Hi, my name is Andy Andre. I live in Glendale. Full address, of course, is in your sheet. What I think we should call this is what it is, is just a big grab by rich and powerful, you know, Waukesha County trying to overtake whatever they can from Milwaukee area and generally from anybody else that they can. With all due respect, the DNR has lost any credibility long time ago, specifically when our current governor took over the state of Wisconsin and when Secretary Stepp took over the DNR. Waukesha, and for the years, for decades now, and DNR, all of a sudden are very concerned about the environmental issues which, right now, are supposedly the reason why they're, why you want to take the water from Great Lakes, okay? While they were developing all kinds of wetlands into all kinds of developments and growing leaps and bounds and having all of the people who have created any wealth for themselves from Milwaukee County moving into Waukesha County, there was no concern whatsoever about the environmental issues. The DNR lost any and all credibility once when they decided that strip mining does not destroy the environment, okay? Absurd, okay? If Waukesha cannot supply itself with adequate water for the growth that they're projecting, maybe then their growth should be curbed a little bit. Perhaps some of those companies that left Milwaukee County for Waukesha should return to Milwaukee County, okay? If I want to go swimming, as I have done last Sunday, I don't go to Lake Michigan. I go to Waukesha, because Waukesha has some of the cleanest water and lakes that I'm aware of that I can practically go drink, okay? Waukesha County is one of the richest, largest counties in Wisconsin that has tons of water that has been known for its high-quality water. All of a sudden, they can't take care of their own problems. They want to steal water from Great Lakes, okay? Astronauts can drink their own urine, and they do that for months at a time, because every water can be purified to be reused again. Part of the reason I know that is because part of my career was spent in water control as well, okay? If they can do it, I'm sure that Waukesha can clean their own water.
Leslie Johnkey. Not here. Timothy Schaefer. And then, following Timothy, I would ask David Fullwiler, Bill Moore, and Ann Brummet to please come forward.
Hi, my name is Timothy Schaefer, and I'm with the Alliance for the Great Lakes. I'm a member of the Compact Implementation Coalition. I grew up in Glendale, about fifteen-minute walk from Lake Michigan, and growing up so close to the lake, it was easy to forget how special it is sometimes, but it's also easy to forget that the lake is not replaceable. Glaciers formed the Lake Michigan thousands of years ago, and while precipitation can replace some of the water, it is essentially a one-time gift from the glaciers, which is why the Great Lakes Compact only allows for diversions when those diversions are absolutely necessary and not when a diversion is simply a city's preferred option. Waukesha has a plentiful supply of water right now, and it has enough potable water right now, and it could treat its existing water supply to meet the city's needs for decades. Not only does Waukesha have enough water, but it is requesting water on behalf of four municipalities that have not requested water and don't need it. It has not shown that it can certainly safely return water to Lake Michigan. Its return plan does not guarantee that there will be no inter-basin transfer of invasive species between Mississippi and Great Lakes basins. It admits its only plan to reduce this possibility and not prevent it. And lastly, Waukesha must prove that similar divisions would not have a cumulative negative impact on the health of the Great Lakes basin. Hasn't provided enough data for this, and I don't sense that it wants to, but it has to show that, and thank you for your time.
Is David Fullwiler up here? Bill Moore?
Hi, I'm a resident of New Berlin, who was an alderman on the New Berlin City Council when New Berlin switched from well water to lake water for the eastern half of the city through the Milwaukee system. It was an appropriate diversion, since we had radium in our groundwater, returned all water to Lake Michigan, and only made the request for the portion of New Berlin east of the subcontinental divide and that portion of the city on municipal wells. Initially, I felt there were good reasons for Waukesha to request an exception, especially because of the need for safe drinking water and that the extracted water would be returned to the lake. I was also concerned that any shallow aquifer drawdown would negatively affect surrounding wetlands, and I do feel that that impact needs further study. But this proposal has a serious precedent-setting flaw. The Great Lakes Compact only allows for a community like Waukesha to request a diversion, while this proposal includes county areas, towns that are not part of the community of Waukesha. Due to the fact that all of the Great Lakes states have to approve the diversion and that the community requirement is significant and basic, that a rejection of the diversion is likely and would thus be an embarrassment to the Wisconsin DNR. Just because Wisconsin says the service area meets state law does not make it so that it meets the language of the compact. The effect of including the future service area will only serve to increase sprawl, and thus, the proposal in its present form should be rejected.
Is Ann Brummet? Carol Limbach, Sura Faraj, and Susan Winieke.
I'm a lifelong resident of Milwaukee County. I now live in St. Francis. I'm opposed to the diversion. I have, what I have heard here, I have two impressions thus far, and they're not favorable. I have the impression that this DNR diversion's a done deal. I believe it's, Waukesha doesn't need it. I now understand how it's expanded geographic area. You know, that's not right. It just seems like a grab, as another gentleman's mentioned. So I am completely opposed to it. I, I'm the one that raised that question about Oak Creek financially benefiting from that, and I, and if this should go through, I believe perhaps the Metropolitan Sewage District or some other collective group would be collectively benefiting from this process. For Oak Creek to float this and then profit from it, it's just obscene. Thank you.
Sura Faraj.
Hi, my name is Sura Faraj. One of the hats I wear is an environmental advocate, and I am a fan of deep ecology, which is a much, has a much longer view, not twenty-five or fifty years out, but looking at our environment and our ecology as a whole, and that would be true sustainability. I attended the coalition's pre-hearing meeting, and there I learned that Waukesha is using outdated and inaccurate information, also incomplete data, and so I would request that all of that information is updated and looked at again from the beginning. I'm concerned about this because it is a water grab and it is the first water grab that will set a precedent under the Great Lakes Compact, and it is very disturbing to me that that's happening in our beautiful state when we are part of something that we're collaborating with, I think, seven other states and Canada. It sounds to me, from everything I've learned, that this is not an appropriate request for water. I, from what I was reading, it sounds like Waukesha is not implementing conservation standards that should be required under the compact. They're not even implementing their own requirements for conservation. They have a few that they have put in place for residents only, and they've worked, they've helped reduce water usage. Now they need to do that for commercial, industrial, and governmental water users. I'm also greatly concerned about introducing foreign water flow into the receiving rivers and returning millions of gallons. That includes pharmaceuticals and potential invasive species. We know Waukesha has the money and capacity to divert the water, so they also have the money and capacity to treat their own, and that's what they should do. Thank you.
Up next, Diane Daglin. After you. Jean Hewitt and Lori Longtime, and next is Susan Winieke.
Winieke.
Winieke. Susan, Susan, and then followed by Diane Daglin, Jean Hewitt, and Lori Longtime.
My name is Susan Winieke, and I'm a resident of Milwaukee. I served on the Board of Directors for the Milwaukee Riverkeeper for three terms, and I can say that the work they do for the rivers and waters of Wisconsin is impeccable. I've never experienced such a hard-working, passionate, dedicated group of people before, and Cheryl Nen, the Riverkeeper, who already testified, is incomparable in her role, and that's why I trust their judgment on this Waukesha water situation, because they have done their research on this issue, and they have arrived at this conclusion. Waukesha can sustainably meet its current and future water needs for its existing water supply service area by treating existing deep groundwater wells for radium and other contaminants while continuing to use its existing shallow wells. Lake Michigan is the centerpiece and masterpiece of our state. It must be kept sanctified and protected, protected fiercely by the citizens of Wisconsin. The coalition of environmental and health organizations have determined that diverting water to Waukesha from Lake Michigan is not a viable option.
My name is Diane Daglin. I live in Wauwatosa, and I, first of all, I want to applaud the Wisconsin DNR for the decision to do an environmental impact statement on this very important issue, and I thank you for letting me speak to you today. I am the Chair and the Conservation Chair for the Great Waters Group of the Local Sierra Club. I urge you to consider two things. First, I'm asking that you consider the new information that has come forward as to the water levels of Waukesha's groundwater increasing. I believe they've, I've heard that they have rose fifteen feet since 2006, because that provides a possible new alternative for water for the city and the areas. Secondly, I ask that you include social justice and environmental justice issues as part of the environmental impact statement, and that you do so from a regional perspective. And the reason for this is that Waukesha is asking for water from Lake Michigan for areas well beyond its city limits, specifically for future economic and industrial development for projected population growth, and this water is coming from or via the city and county of Milwaukee, which has a lot of access for water but has a lot of empty factories and also has a lot of people who are unemployed, especially people of color, and I think this is an important consideration. So to promote this water diversion will do more than just exacerbate urban sprawl. It will further divide the two cities. It used to be that the expressways were the promoters of urban sprawl and would divide peoples, but here we have water, we've got a blue source of division, that will divide the two cities further, both economically and racially. So please consider these things when you complete your environmental impact statement. Thank you. Jean Hewitt.
I'm Dr. Jean Hewitt. I'm an epidemiologist at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, where I am a leader in the Children's Environmental Health Sciences Corps Center. I'm also a Waukesha resident. I live five blocks into the county. I wanted to speak to issues that have been raised here but for which there have been no answers. Safe water has been referred to numerous times, as well as radium in the water. Radium, of course, is the issue. It is a carcinogen, right? It causes cancer, but we have not heard anything about what is the cancer risk in Waukesha County. So I went and did my due diligence and looked at the data. I examined data from the National Cancer Institute based on cancer registry data from 2008 to 2012, the most recent data. I'm going to briefly summarize that, but I think it's really important because we have all been hearing about radium but not have skirted the issue, so it's important to look at that. As context, Wisconsin has a significantly higher age-adjusted incidence rate of all cancers compared to the US. The highest cancer rate was in Vilas County, and the lowest was in Pierce County, and there is a wide range within the state. I will look at Waukesha County. Waukesha County's annual incidence rate for all cancers combined was significantly higher than either Wisconsin or the nation. Driving that, because I looked at all sorts of cancer sites that are plausible and important, breast cancer and brain cancer were the two that dominate, that are at the highest quintile of risk, so I looked at that. Lung cancer and bone cancer are causally associated with radium, and Waukesha County's lung cancer risk is 54.7 per 100,000 population. Waukesha's lung cancer incidence rate is significantly lower than either Wisconsin or the nation, so the cancer of most concern related to radium in the drinking water is very low in Waukesha County. And I looked at the cigarette smoking, which is also moderate compared to others. It's 17.4% compared to, say, 26% in Milwaukee County. So I think that the concern about radium and drinking should, the record should reflect that, and I will provide you with more data for the written testimony.
Next is Lori Longtime, and following Lori, I'd like to call up Patrick Planton, Mike Rozika, and I apologize, I believe it's Wei Saunders.
My name is Lori Longtime. My husband and I live in the town of Waukesha. We have for 22 years. It's a stone's throw from the town of Genesee, which is also in the highly controversial expanded water service area. We lived in the city of Waukesha for ten years prior, so we are well-versed in the nuances of this issue. The DNR says it looked at the expanded service area and determined there is no supply of potable water. This comes as quite a surprise to us, as our private well and septic systems have supplied us well for these last 22 years, as well as my husband's parents for the 35 years prior to that. We live in their house, as well as our neighbors, our fellow, and our fellow town of Rock County. As well as our neighbors, our fellow, and our fellow Town of Waukesha residents, all of whom enjoy plentiful, clean water that is recyclable and quite sustainable in that it is replenished by the rain that falls. Understand this about the expanded water service area. It adds 17 square miles to the city of Waukesha's current water service area, almost doubling it in size. It includes portions of the towns of Genesee and Dolefield and a chunk of the city of Peewaqui, and it includes all of the town of Waukesha. All of the expanded water service area, towns and cities alike, are on private wells and septic. Zoning is one to two acres minimum, enough to support that kind of a system. There is not widespread contamination of these wells or a dwindling water supply. There is no way these areas can comply with the Great Lakes Compact's requirement to employ water conservation, because without a central water supply point, there's not even a way to measure what is being used, much less what is being conserved. In 1998, when sewer packs set the boundaries of the much-touted sewer service area, no one in or out of that expanded water service area, or sewer pack for that matter, could imagine that 15 years hence, they'd be put in the city of Waukesha's water service area and made part of an application to divert water from the Great Lakes over the subcontinental divide. The city claims that this expanded water service area is not about growth. Not true. The proof is in the city's own plan to develop a blue mound road-style industrial and commercial corridor all the way along Highway 164, stretching five miles from Highway 59 on the south side of Waukesha to I-43 in the south. And this is the end game no one is copping to, but the taxpayers and ratepayers of the city of Waukesha are going to be burdened with this for decades to come.
I'm not sure who's next, because I read three names and only one person came up.
Ready to go.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Planton. I am a Wisconsin professional engineer, and I've been working for 30 years on drinking water projects throughout Wisconsin and the country. I currently serve as the Chair of the American Water Works Association Wisconsin Section, but please note that any comments I'm making today are personal or professional and are not on behalf of AWWA Wisconsin. I've got some history on this system and project. I grew up in Chabwick and four blocks from the lake. I love Lake Michigan. I also was the principal author of the Waukesha Water Utility Master Plans in 1992. Is that good? Don't take time away. In 1992, near 2000, I was the principal author of the Water System Master Planning Project. I also researched and gave four presentations on the Great Lakes Charter Annex in 2003 and 2008 to various organizations, so I'm really very interested in what's going on here. I also lived through this back 30 years ago when I was working and living in Palatine, Illinois, when they went from groundwater to lake water, where they had deep wells, radium was in the water, the water levels were declining five to 10 feet per year. They contacted the local regional water authority, and presto bingo, they got Great Lakes water without much of a fuss compared to what's going on right here. The thing that really shocked me is that 7 million people in northeastern Illinois live outside the boundary of the Great Lakes, and they receive Great Lakes water. Half the state of Illinois gets Great Lakes water outside the boundary. The year 1900 diversion of water at Chicago, reversing the flow of the Chicago River, was really the true first diversion, taking water out of the basin and taking it and delivering it to the Mississippi River Basin. A diversion, not the water coming back. And that wasn't even the first one. The first one was the Erie Canal in 1825, and then 1848, Chicago had another smaller diversion, so. And there's major diversions coming into Lake Superior and the Great Lakes in World War II, even the Portage Canal in 1860. The last diversion approved by the governors was Akron, Ohio, 1998. Water was coming out of Lake Erie in one location and being replaced in another with different water quality characteristics. So diversions in the U.S. and in the Great Lakes are not unique, but the Great Lakes are very unique, and we have to protect this very valuable resource. And that was the whole purpose of the compact way it was created. Waukesha studied this project for over 10 years. It has vetted and evaluated many, many different alternatives. No water supply project is perfect. I can verify that from my experience. Waukesha is not proposing a perfect solution. No one is. The diversion is going to replenish or return virtually 100% of the water. I believe the proposal is reasonable and meets the intent of the compact and the intent of the governors who signed it back in 2008 and the two Canadian premiers. So thank you for your time and effort. I know it's a very difficult situation that affects water supply in Wisconsin and the Great Lakes. That affects everybody here and our 7 million friends in Illinois. Thank you.
Is Mike Cruzika here? Or Wei Saunders?
Lucy Saunders?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. You couldn't read my handwriting.
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Lucy Saunders, and I organize a conference on water and energy conservation for craft brewers. I oppose the diversion application in order to protect the wildlife and health of Lake Michigan. I believe that the rate of water withdrawals would be exacerbated by climate change. First of all, lower lake levels would hurt Lake Michigan. We face a rapidly warming climate. The combination of high heat and ultraviolet intensity will accelerate evaporation as lake levels drop. A hotter Lake Michigan will accelerate growth of codafra. This will harm wildlife. We can develop other alternatives to meet Waukesha's water needs. There's great new technology with costs dropping rapidly for reverse osmosis and onsite water reuse and conservation. I believe that those efforts should be focused on first, and that any diversion application would be for last resort. Thank you very much.
The next three people are Spencer Stotts, Peter Slobey, or Slaby, and Angie Van Sock. Are any of those people here? Oh, they are.
They were sitting way in the back, so they're coming around. I thought there were three appointments. No, two. Two? Am I up? Angie Van Sock?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Angie Van Sock. I've been a Town of Waukesha resident since 1984. During that time, I served as Town Chairman on the Town Plan Commission, encompassing close to 20 years. I was Town Chairman when we received the utility's DNR-prompted letter in January of 2011 regarding inclusion in the water service area. It was the first we had heard of it, as the map was established years earlier without the benefit of public hearing or town input. We utilized our attorneys and Bruce Baker, the retired Wisconsin DNR Water Division Manager, whose experience includes the development of the compact. It wasn't just a simple yes or no for us. We have a remediated fly ash site, plus a few town residents receive city water and sewer through limited development agreements forged in the 1980s. We believed uncontrolled expansion of the city would not fly under the terms of the compact, so we negotiated to control our destiny and protect our constituents. Bruce Baker would later write, "It was clear after two years of negotiating, the city was not going to give the town veto over annexation and development. We voted to limit the service area." A real estate developer challenged me in the town election held a couple of months later. He scared residents by claiming town wells were contaminated. Therefore, we needed to reverse the limited service area decision. In my opinion, the city facilitated the deception. My challenger won by a small percentage. It was despicable. No mention none of contaminated wells since that April 2013 election. The service area was revised to include the majority of the town of Waukesha. Now, the city's long-range land use plan mirrors their water service area. City planners and officials have said, "I see us growing. City staff expects the city limits to grow to the south. I see us growing to the west. There are 1,500 acres still in our water and sewer service area, much of which is relatively vacant. It would require annexation from the town of Waukesha for sewer and water service, of course, but it's a logical extension." In my opinion, the Town of Waukesha residents can expect a number of things in our future: continued decimation of the town by the city. Second, a high risk that the Lake Michigan application will fail, given their expanded mapped area, and subsequently, the city will resort to their stated Plan B, many shallow aquifer wells in and around the town of Waukesha that could destroy our private well supply. That is our reality. Do I believe the city should get Lake Michigan water? Absolutely yes. Do I believe they'll get approved with the Town of Waukesha included in the service area? No. The application can be amended. The city has the opportunity to work with us proactively to avoid the chorus of opposition to the service area. They wouldn't, so now cooler heads must prevail to save them from themselves and save us in the Town of Waukesha. Thank you.
Everyone, that you may also submit written comments in case you feel that you don't have enough time to give your oral comments. Next is Spencer Stotts. Peter Slobey.
Okay, my name is Peter Slobey. S-L-A-B, like in Boston Y. I live in, for a lifetime, here in Milwaukee area, Wisconsin, currently retired in Bayview. I, against, I vote nay, and against the application as put together now and perhaps forever and ever and ever. I think it's important to remember that here in Waukesha and Milwaukee, we are adjacent to the Great Lakes Basin, which cannot be taken in isolation in comparison, when measured against the entire global biological chain of life. The entire globe is all interrelated, including our Great Lakes Basin. I think, number two, if the DNR would accept this application, I state that the folks should beware of the precedent that would be set, that would invite others as the years go by to tap in into the Great Lakes water system. So I would say that includes the DNR, the sewer pack people, the water folks in certainly in Waukesha. But I would ask, though, that all of these folks who are doing all this planning, take in consideration and review their old assumptions and accept and understand new information that is continually coming down the line. Otherwise, your reputation could be at stake if the application goes through to the entire Great Lakes Compact. Number three, and last, if the DNR approves this application, is it guaranteed that's Peter, me, will do all he can as a retired old guy to assist other groups to monitor and make sure that every single other state and the two Canadian provinces and invested folks get the information that they need? That's, thank you.
Next up are Paul Vandeveldt, Mary Hebel, and Robert Pietrowski.
My name is Paul Vandeveldt. I live in Wauwatosa. I think there are maybe some people in here, in this room, that would not believe that a small diversion and a small exception would lead to eventual large-scale diversions of Lake Michigan water to the southwest United States and even foreign countries. I would take, I think that that's an actual possibility. I'll briefly give you a parallel example of, from Wisconsin. About 20 years ago, they asked residents of Wisconsin if they would like to have a state lottery, because there had been no gambling in Wisconsin. A lot of people like me said, "Well, I don't think that could be very harmful to have an innocent state lottery." Well, then a few years later, they allowed bingo. And then, a few bad federal court decisions later, they allowed off-reservation gambling. And at this time, there are probably maybe 10 or a dozen casinos off-reservation in Wisconsin. I think that this is just an example of how, once you allow an exception, that you really don't know where it is going to end up. I think if initially, if they had asked Wisconsin residents, "Do you want a dozen Las Vegas-style casinos in your state of Wisconsin?", the emphatic answer would have been no. But now, I think that there's policy creep, and I think it's an actual possibility for large-scale diversions. Thank you.
Next is Mary Hebel.
Mary Hebel, New Berlin, Wisconsin. Thank you. The diversion states, "Divergence shall be limited to quantities that are reasonable for the purpose for which it is proposed." When Waukesha submitted its first request for Lake Michigan water, it requested in the range of 18 million gallons per day. Its second request scaled it back to 10.6 million gallons a day. Its third request is asking for 10.1 million gallons per day. The actual numbers for 2014 pumping are 6.6 million gallons per day. What is it with these numbers? Originally requesting 18 million, scaling back to 10 million, and actually pumping at 6.6 million is a heck of a lot of difference, resulting in an excessive wasteful request. To me, such arbitrary figures surely don't instill trust in the integrity of this request. The DNR, in rejecting the non-diversion proposal, has argued in four areas that the non-diversion would damage wetlands. Has the DNR questioned the inflated wasteful numbers compared to the actual usage? On February 12, 2014, the Journal Sentinel reported that the volume of water used by Waukesha customers in 40 years or so is 7.3% less than the average of 10.9 million gallons a day estimate included in a May 2010 draft diversion request to the DNR. The utility projects its customers will reduce water demand by 10%, about 1 million gallons a day by mid-century through conservation measures. Though the city's population increased about 12% between 99 and 2010, water used by single-family residential customers decreased by 8.6% in the same period, according to plan documents. If the city implemented a program on water-saving toilets, an additional million, an additional 1 million per day gallons could be conserved. What about upgrading water softeners and filters and installing lead detection equipment? That cost would be trivial compared to the behemoth amount for the diversion. And by the way, what will the diversion cost? In one source, I read in the range of 230 million, in another, 334 million. Here, I'm talking about water quantity when the crux of this request should be water quality, reducing the level of radium. Funny how the focus is totally on the volume of water requested when it should be on the quality. As I sat through last night's public hearing, I was puzzled. Repeatedly, the non-diversion proposal was vilified and discredited. Yet, certified hydrologists, environmental lawyers, engineers, water scientists, et cetera, put together this report, specialists who make a living studying and protecting water. Clean Wisconsin alone has been in the business for 45 years. That's credible experience. Why is one proposal all right and another all wrong? This precedent-setting request raises questions on sustaining the stability and integrity of the biotic community. Elder Leopold stated, "A thing is right when it tends to preserve the integrity, stability, and beauty of the biotic community. It is wrong when it tends otherwise." Too many questions abound on the rightness of this request. As it stands, I am opposed to it, and thank you for the extra time.
Next is Robert Pietrowski, and then Ed Henshaw, and then I'll go back through the names of people who were not here when I called their names.
My name is Robert Pietrowski. I live in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I'm opposed to this diversion of water. Number one, radium can be taken out of the water through all the chemicals that we have available to us in filtering system. There's a city in California that is reusing its wastewater completely. It was on 2020, and they drank the water right on TV that they can recycle their own thing. They do it in a space shuttle. Why can't they do it in Waukesha? To me, Waukesha is nothing but an Asian carp. It's going to come in and infest us with draining more water than what we have. It's going to come in and infest us with draining more water than what we have. A few years ago, Lake Michigan was down. It has started to come back up again. Using this water and diverting it through the River Parkway is a potential for flooding during the heavy spring rains and that. And I don't go for that. If they're going to return it back, put it rest straight back into Lake Michigan and put it in clean. They have to take this responsibility on themselves. Earlier, I had, I have friends out in Waukesha, when there was a little shortage, when Lake Michigan was down and everything, they said, "Well, I don't worry about water. I can pay for it." And they kept on sprinkling their lawns. And this is the attitude out in Waukesha. There was a story that I gave to one of my friends in Waukesha about what they do. They cut the grass. It's not green, they water it. Then they cut it again, and they ship all their stuff out. And this is getting ridiculous. They have many different technologies out there to supply their own water and to keep it working well for them. I saw a report in the nineteen nineties that said all the aquifers were going down, especially out west. Even in, even in Midwest, the aquifers were going down. I was pleased to hear that the aquifer out in Waukesha went up by ten feet. They should be able to maintain their own thing. They stole a lot of businesses from Milwaukee by giving them the water, by giving them the land and everything. They also covered up a lot of swamp land by putting in strip malls and everything. They did not do any conservation of water that I know of. And if they start doing that, like California is right now, they would be able to have enough water to sustain their way of life. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ed Henshaw. I'm a resident of the city of Waukesha, and by way of full disclosure, I'm a former city administrator of the city of Waukesha. I've been a city administrator or village manager for nearly thirty-five years of my career, and have spent a lot of time trying to solve problems. I'm going to be very brief and just try to correct a couple of issues that I've been hearing in the last two public hearings. First of all, this is a little bit of like deja vu for me. In the early nineteen seventies, I was a city administrator of a small community in Michigan. A high-pressure oil line that ran through our municipal water field burst. The sad joke was that if you needed to fill the tank of your car, turn on your water faucet. That's how bad the water became as a result of that. Thank goodness, Michigan is within the, entirely within the watershed, and we were able to obtain Lake Huron water. We did it from the city of Detroit via the city of Flint. It was a pipeline that was about the equivalent of running a pipeline from Lake Michigan to about Johnson Creek or Lake Mills. I only tell you that because long-distance pipelines, the science for that is not new, and it can be done without harming the environment. Secondly, we keep referring to the DNR. I think we need to avoid that. You all are the Department of Natural Resources, and you have a responsibility to protect the natural resources of our state. You have a difficult job balancing the, the protection of, of the natural resources of the lakes, rivers, and streams with the Great Lakes. And I think in this instance, you've done a marvelous job doing that with the data that's been provided to you by the city of Waukesha. There is a statutory responsibility of municipalities to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. Waukesha is attempting to do that. Finally, with regard to the issue of expansion, the city of Waukesha has a policy against selling water outside its municipal boundaries. It only does so to protect the health, safety, and welfare of those external residents where there are particular difficulties. I want to thank you for your time, and I thank the DNR for their careful consideration of this matter. And please support the application. Thank you.
Right. Now, I'm going to read through the names of people I read previously who were not here. If you are here, please come forward and make, make your statement. Robert McLeod. In forward is Leslie Jonckie here. David Fullwiler. Ann Brummett. Mike Cruzika. Or Spencer Stats. Okay, go ahead, Ezra.
Hi there, thank you. I'm with Clean Wisconsin out of Madison, and Clean Wisconsin is a member of the Compact Implementation Coalition. So certainly agree with all the comments that have been made by representatives of our organization previously today. There's two key things I wanted to touch on, though. There's a couple of key premises, either of the application and/or the department's preliminary review, that I think deserve to be, should be highlighted and some attention drawn to them here. I'm sure they've been covered at previous, I missed some of the previous testimony, but I'm sure, I'm not bringing anything totally new up, but a matter of emphasis here. On the application, really emphasizes the drawdown in the deep aquifer over the past century, and, and tries to parlay that into, into an argument that there's no longer the inability to use that aquifer in a sustainable way. But I think the science is out on that question, and I really want to encourage, I know you've heard this request from others, the department to think about that question of sustainability of the usage of the deep aquifer as part of a solution going forward. There's been a request in writing from our group that the sewer pack regional model of the deep aquifer be revisited with some of the new information that shows, I think, clearly, and others who are better experts on this than I do, clearly showing evidence of a rebound in the, in the static level of that aquifer. And that information changes things. It changes the way we looked at this when the Sewer Pack Regional Water Supply Study, for instance, was created, not quite ten years ago, but a number of years ago, anyway. And so, we've got to update that information and get that sound basis for this evaluation going forward. The second thing is the, we worked closely with the department over this past year on the evaluation of additional wells, should they be needed, in the Fox River Valley, and potential impacts that might result on wetlands. But I think that the evaluation needs to go significantly farther in order to really understand whether those, the local water impacts of that pumping would indeed affect those wetlands or not. There's a, there's a logic jump there in the way that preliminary conclusions of the department have arrived at a, at a conclusion on that point that I think needs to be looked at significantly more in depth before we can really know the answer to that important question. Just wanted to highlight those two points. Thank you so much.
Next is Ann Brummett.
I live at forty-five twenty-four North Bartlett in Shorewood, Wisconsin, but I grew up in Waukesha County. I love the Great Lakes and am grateful that we have the Great Lakes Compact to protect them. I believe a diversion of Great Lakes water is a threat to the lives, to the ecosystems, and the communities of the Great Lakes. I'm speaking up because I believe that Waukesha can do more to conserve, that they should not be expanding their service area, and that we should only be moving water between watersheds under very extraordinary circumstances. The Great Lakes have supported life for millennia and should not, and should continue to do so for our future generations. But if we allow this diversion to go forward, we are setting a dangerous precedent that could harm the system. As, as a citizen steward of the Great Lakes, I strongly recommend against the diversion. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on the diversion application or the EIS? If not, I would like to thank all of you for coming, for your attendance at the hearing. I'd like to remind you again that the record will remain open for the reception of written comments. We're also going to Racine for another hearing tonight at six-thirty, in case you want to attend another one of these. And again, thank you for your attendance, and we'll look forward to your written comments.